I call the meeting of the Select Board to order on June 7th at 7:35 PM. I'll accept a motion to open the meeting.
So made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. For roll call, Mr. Gito. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Present.
Mr. Carrara?
Here.
And I'm here. I ask all to stand if you are able to salute our flag. Thank you so much. In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to the public board and town meetings, and recently extended until July 15, 2022, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. To join via Google Meets, it is meet.google.com backslash QSP-IAIG-FFY. The phone number is 1-720-316-5237. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and livestream in www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting is live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful, times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chairman's discretion. Our agenda, first agenda, is Paula Newt. I see you're just walking in. Please approach the table. This is a vote to award $5,387,277 in bond anticipation note. Paula will tell us what this bond note is for and give us some more details. She's also asking us to read a certain portion of this package for her records and authority. And with that said, take it away, Ms. Paula Newt.
Thank you very much, and good evening to everyone.
Can I? Yeah. Yes.
That is better?
Yes, much better.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you for having me to your meeting, and good evening to all the Select Board. I appreciate being here. As you had mentioned, the bond anticipation...
Hello? Hello, just a minute. The Treasurer Collector is presenting. Thank you, Deborah, for putting that on mute. Please proceed.
Thank you. So, as you had mentioned, this is a $5,387,277 bond anticipation note, which is a BAN for short, and the board will be voting and signing for this BAN. It has a one-year term. It will mature on June 16 of 2023. The projects that are related to these funds are seen on pages 1 and 2 of the signature, no litigation, and official statement certificate that is in your packet. Thank you, Deb, for calling me and letting me know that there was a $20 difference that was found. It happened to be on the trash truck, so the bond council had it as $20 less than what it actually was. So, good catch. Like I had said, I just getting into my emails because I've been on vacation, so I appreciate you finding that. The principal amount of $5,387,277 and the premium amount of $50,263.29 will be credited to the town's bank account on June 16 of this year, and the winning bidder was Oppenheimer and Company. The coupon interest rate is 3%, but with the premium, it brings the net interest cost down to 2.067. So, we did very well with the rate, considering last year for the October, I'm sorry, for the June BAN, it was at 2.50. So, we did pretty good, considering the rates have gone up much. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you very much. I will turn this over to my fellow board members to see if they have any questions before... We do have to read that first one.
Yes, you do. You have to read the Select Board's vote.
While I'm looking for that, I'll ask my fellow board members if they have any questions.
Could be the first page in the packet after this.
First page packet?
After, if you want.
Okay. Oh, you want to just show me that because I can't see that just yet? Right. Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Kavy?
I'll read this.
Mr. Gito, do you have any questions for Ms. Paula Newt?
None.
Mr. McCrisky?
No.
Mr. Carrara says no, and Mr. Kavy?
No questions, thank you.
And I have no questions. Can you please read that into the record? Thank you.
Sure. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Stoughton, Massachusetts, certify that at the meeting of... So, is this... Am I reading the entire thing, including that, or just the vote part?
I'm sorry?
Am I reading the whole thing?
Yes, you have to read the whole thing.
You got it. Okay. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Stoughton, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held June 7, 2022, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and in which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of $5,387,277 3% general obligation anticipation notes, the note of the town dated June 16, 2022, and payable June 16, 2023, to the Oppenheimer and Company at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $50,000, sorry, Further voted that in connection with the market and sale of the note, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 25, 2022, and the final official statement dated June 1, 2022, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant event disclosure undertaking in compliance with the SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the note for the benefit of the holder of the note from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the note and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the note, collectively called the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electric mail in a quote "pdf.pdf" end quote file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document, and electronic signature on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the document and all matters related thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote. I further certify that the votes were taken in a meeting open to the public, that no votes were taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda include the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 94 CMR 29.032B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remained so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberation or decision in connection with the sale of the note were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law Chapter 30A subsections 18 through 25 as amended. Hopefully, I didn't miss anything.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Kavy. Is there a motion to accept the vote to award the $5,387,277 in bond anticipation note?
So made.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is interdepartmental transfer from solid waste, streetlights, and COA budgets to vehicle gasoline. And please approach the table, Mr. Paul Jafune, the DPW Superintendent. Oh, and Sue Herman as well. Please approach. The request is for $50,000.
Good evening. Thank you, Paul Jafune, Public Works Superintendent.
Susan Herman, Director of Auditing and Analysis.
Sorry. Sorry. So, Ms. Roberts, that's correct. The $50,000 is only a portion of what we're asking. That's the, from the Finance Committee's reserve funds for the fuel line item in their budget. Also, there's $86,100 from the departments and line items that you previously mentioned. So, we're here really to ask for this transfer because of the price of the fuel and not over-usage or anything nefarious going on with either the gasoline or the diesel. It's really just strictly price-driven. Susan might have more to add to that, but that's kind of in a nutshell.
Yeah, I think the last six weeks, there's been a fantastic increase in price. You see it in the paper. I pretty much check it every day, and I think just in the last month, I've seen Brent crude oil go from $100 a barrel to $120 a barrel. That directly affects the price of gasoline. We are looking at ways that we can possibly trim the usage. It's very hard. I have, during the height of the pandemic, I looked at the gasoline figures, usage, pretty closely to determine what the bottom usage was for the town without... Because everything was closed down, people were working, but it was, the usage was at a minimum. We're not that much above that now, so I know the usage is pretty much under control. I had to estimate prices for this month. I'm using an estimate of $7 of diesel for the last bill that we have. It's really just a problem in diesel, right? Well, it's a problem in both, but diesel is the bigger issue for the town. We do use, as a town, much more diesel than we do unleaded. It's the trash trucks and the fire engines, which are the primary users of the diesel. As far as an outlook for the summer, it's pretty worrisome. I'm there, it's possible that diesel will be in short supply, not only a price problem, but a supply problem. No one knows what's going to happen. I'm just putting that out there as a possibility.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to my fellow board members to see if they have any questions. Mr. Carrara?
I don't, I don't have any questions. It's just people, if you just watch, you don't even have to read things. You just watch the news, and it's jumping 20 cents in a day, 40 cents over three, and diesel's ridiculous right now. It'll be, it'll be $8. It won't be $7. We're steering down at 8 at the pumps. So, I don't know if it's, when it's going to back off. I just don't.
And I agree with that.
We might be back at the table again, looking to crunch, to keep things moving.
I see, Mr. Tisdale, you don't have... Okay, Mr. Vice Chair Kavy?
Yeah, I just have one question. This is really on the periphery. This is, price of gas is the price of gas, and so, you know, I understand what's going on here. I think that typically, some people who will have like a need for a commodity like oil or fuel, cyclical need for it, are, will, you know, will buy like futures in that in order to be able to predict the price or sort of hedge on the potential price. Do we have any programs that would allow us to do that?
Where the la... Well, I recommended the town lock into the price of gasoline twice, probably within the last five to six years. There's an expression, a bird in hand is better than two in the bush, but I'm really not a bird in hand person, and I tell people that. I like to go for two in the bush, and we were able to do that. I don't foresee, unfortunately, I don't foresee that kind of opportunity coming for...
It's too late now.
Right, way too late, and I don't see it coming for another six months.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a difficult game, as you know, probably more than the average person. It's very, very hard.
Yeah.
We were very lucky, but it takes a lot of, takes a lot to say, yeah, let's pull the trigger and buy 42,000 gallons at once of each product, and that's exactly what we do.
Yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your question, Mr. Kavy. Mr. McCrisky? Mr. Gito? Thank you, and I have no questions. We've all looked at the market, and it is unpredictable, and we anticipate you may be back. So, with that said, I will accept a motion to, for the interdepartmental transfer.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it. Moving to the next is interdepartmental transfer from procurement and recreation to town manager budget consultant line to fund the community paradigm agreement and advertising. Sue Herman is the presenter, and the amount is $10,980 is the request.
You may notice that's $1,000 more than the contract that was signed. The reason is, I look back at the last time the town hired community paradigm, and also in the contract, it said they have the right to add in for advertising, and it was about $800 or $900 the last time, so I added in another $1,000, depending, I don't know where it will be advertised, but that was the prudent thing to do. I actually think the last contract too was funded from a procurement inter-transfer. And then, these two, these two or three departments, when we asked for fuel money at a department head meeting, they volunteered this, which was great, but it was a drop in the bucket for fuel, but it did this job, so we appreciate it. And it's going to the town manager consultant fees line.
Is Mr. Rowe online? Bill Rowe? Mr. Rowe, he's probably on mute. Okay, and we'll wait and, we'll move forward and ask our fellow board members if they have any questions about this transfer.
I have no questions.
Mr. Gito?
Mr. Carrara?
And I have no questions. I just wanted, if Mr. Rowe was online, I wanted him to provide some clarity about encumbrance and the end of the fiscal year, but if he's not here, it's really a moot...
I can try to answer that. I believe you have to ask for one bill. It can be small, for fiscal '22, and then we can carry over the encumbrance into fiscal '23 with, without a problem. We should encumber it right away, and the town should request a small bill from community paradigm.
Thank you very much, Ms. Herman. I will accept a motion to transfer the $10,980, the amount required. Okay, may I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All righty.
Thank you.
And thank you. Next is an increase in, a fee increase for ambulance services, and Chief Carroll and Assistant Chief Jackson. May come, uh-huh.
Good evening.
Very much.
So, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, we come to you tonight to, with the goal of increasing our ambulance rates for transportations. The last time this was done in 2016, in comparison to the other communities, you know, we were equal in some areas, but quite low in others. I know, or I believe, I know it's a concern of mine, the first question would be, how does this affect the residents? It really doesn't, and I say that because this is really, the billing goes to the insurance companies. We, when we first took over, we went to a new ambulance billing company. It's a much better streamlined process for us and for, and for the community. We're able to capture a lot more of our transport fees in a timely manner. It's, it's just, the minute we finish a report at the hospital, it's already sent to the billing portion, and they're already sending it out. It does take a little bit of time for these insurance companies to pay us back or to pay for them. You know, our goal is to increase, so there, in Stoughton, we do it, there are some towns that really spread it out, but in Stoughton, we break it down to four, four things. BLS, which is basic life support. ALS-1, which is a very basic, I say that, basic advanced life support, where we're putting it on the monitor, and I should also introduce, we have our deputy bracket who's heads our EMS division with us, with any specific questions when it comes to that. And then we have ALS-2, and those are your high advanced life support, cardiac arrest, major traumas, things like that. And then our mileage was really, really down as far as the communities. Now, how's that affect the residents? The residents are billed what their, you know, they're billed what their insurance companies will pay. Medicare pays a flat fee for the state. You can bill them as much as you want, this is what we get. The other insurance companies, the private insurance companies, for the most part, will pay what the bill is. And where that's important is in motor vehicle accidents, they kind of cap a $10,000 fee. Who gets to it first? Well, if we're transporting, get to the hospital and sending that out, and the billing company's already sending that, we're capturing a lot of what we, what we bill for. What's important here is mutual aid. When we go out of town, so let's say Sharon ambulance comes in, they're, and I'll just use mileage as an example, when Sharon ambulance comes in, like they did yesterday, if they go to a Stoughton residence, they're charging at a rate of $36.11 per mile. We charge $19.09. Our residents are paying the Sharon rates. They don't pay the Stoughton rates. When we go to Sharon Mutual Aid, Sharon residents are paying our rates. Okay? So, that's where it's important. And I kind of thought about it too. A lot of our residents transport to the Good Sam, so when you start looking at that, the mileage is really short. At the max, it's probably six miles since Norwood went out, but it's really a six mile at the most, usually three miles. So, it's not going to affect that residence as much. Where it does affect are, there's special cases where people, we go out to the highway, they want to go to Boston, they want to go to, or it's a major trauma, they have to go to Boston, or there's special cases where they have to go to Mass General, and we're more than willing to do that, but it does take our ambulance out of service. And now, as we just heard, with diesel prices the way they are and fuel prices the way they are, it does affect us. Bottom line, we're, and we did run this by Sue Herman too, and she was all for it, because it's basically a standard across the industry right now, and we're behind, and I just want to catch us up. I think it's, and please don't forget, this, all this money goes into the general account, and so it benefits us. Concerns residents, I feel like they're not affected. We also have a hardship waiver they can certainly fill out. Medicare is what it is. Where this captures is, there's a lot of businesses we respond to, medical accidents out on the highway, anybody traveling through town in a mutual aid, you know, it, I think it's fair, and again, I, it's the insurance company that's paying, it's not the residents. We have, we also have, with Pro EMS, we signed in and we put in a clause that Stoughton residents do not, if their insurance company requires it, do not pay a copay for any transports. You know, that's waived, and it's just part of being, part of a Stoughton resident. So, I'm willing to handle any questions, or if the Assistant Chief has anything else to add.
Excuse me. Good evening. I'd just like to follow up with what the chief said. The rates have been what they have been for six years, and this, the community, the town of Stone provides this service, and we just want to see that the community gets recouped for the service that is provided. And so, six years doesn't seem like a long time, but in healthcare costs, it's substantial. We just feel... We just feel like the town of Stoughton is due what the other communities are getting as far as the ambulance billing. To double down on what Chief Carroll said, these costs are paid for by the private insurance companies, the auto insurance companies for car accidents, and for Medicaid, Medicare, and Mass Health when required. They're not being directly billed to the resident.
Thank you very much, Chief and Assistant Chief. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, I'll go to Mr. Gito first, on the left.
We would have no problem with that whatsoever, coming there every June and looking at every surrounding community's rates. And if we feel on a recommendation, we'd be happy to come here on an annual basis and revisit our rates. This is our first year in here, and we recognize that the rates haven't changed in six years. And we felt the responsible thing would be to come before the board and have those rates reflect what the current costs are today.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Gito, and that response. Mr. McCrisky, did you have a question?
Well, it was a statement, first of all, to back up with the Assistant Chief had just mentioned that this is the, in their first year of this leadership. So I'm glad that you've brought that before us. And I agree with Mr. Gito, this should be a yearly, or you wouldn't have a better idea of when they need to be, bi, you know, biannual. I mean, maybe that's, you know, is when you're going to see more of a jump, but we should stay with the trend on getting what's owed to the town. I mean, we work hard enough for it, so we should get it. And I just had a question on, on our policy on reimbursements. I know that the chief has some direct authority over that, where if somebody's unable to pay, he's able to do that. And I believe there was a mechanism for the select board as well. You know, are those two both full in force?
Yes, it is. So we carried that over into, carried that policy into Pro EMS, and it's exactly the same. So any hardship, when somebody, you know, applies for a hardship waiver, that will come across my desk, they have to submit, you know, their current finances, tax returns, and how they're doing. Based on that, we'll look, and there's actually a committee set up within there, including Janice. And we kind of look at it. There have been, knock on wood, there have been very few. Because again, insurance companies do a really good job of covering. Now, there's times it's a difference of $200, and we're not going to, you know, I say this, probably putting myself out there, we're not going to chase $200 over, you know, $4,000 bill. If the, you know, it's, we try to capture it, we put in collection if it has to. But if somebody comes up with a hardship, it'll do that. Anything that I feel is an appeal, the way it's drawn up, I would cer, it certainly would go to the board. I haven't had that issue yet, and I'm hoping that we're pretty fair and reasonable. Our goal is not to hurt the resident for using and calling 911. That's, we have a, we have an obligation to respond, and we have a duty to respond. Our goal is really to collect what is across the board, being collected everywhere else. And so, and in understanding what the town's done for us, and the select board's done for us in supporting us over the past year, I feel like it's our duty to come to you. Biannual might be tough, because I get the, we do a survey with the Norfolk County Fire Chiefs annually, and that's where it kind of stood out. But I'd be more than happy, and if it's available biannually, I'll look at that, but.
No, it was just, you'll know better than us.
No, it's a good question. It's just, this came across.
I would rather it be annually, you know, but I wasn't sure what kind of a jump in figures you're looking at between one year versus two years. But, you know, again, that's, that's your call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Mr. Kavie, you said you had two questions?
Yeah, just a, just a few. And, you know, everything here seems very reasonable to me, but there's just a couple of things that I'd just like to have a better picture of, how you arrived at these numbers. First of all, the ALS, let me start by actually saying, I checked out the cumulative rate of inflation during the same period, six years, and that's about 20.5% increase, right? So anything close to 20% increase makes like perfect sense. That's, you know, that's the same cost essentially. ALS, the increase is 20%. So obviously, that's like really understandable. BLS, a little bit more, it's 27%, so that's about a third higher, but, but also like, I think very much within a reason. ALS-2 actually is only 9%, so it's like way cheaper, you know, not much of an increase, you're, given that. So all of those three, like, all make sense to me. The one that just is a big jump is the, is the mileage. That's 125% increase. But I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, that is, matches what our surrounding communities are charging for the same thing, and I'm guessing covering things like our diesel fuel and whatnot.
Yes, so when we looked at that, and the Assistant Chief can, can probably either add to this, when we looked at this, they really set them, they really set that mileage low back in 2016. There's a, there's an added part to this that a lot of towns choose not to do, and I agree with it. They charge for everything they can. So there's a couple of towns that charge in the twenties for, per mile, but then they have a list, a list of probably 10 additional things they charge for.
How much gauze they use, or whatever.
Exactly. Throw, throwaway BLS equipment, C collars, everything. It's a, it's kind of where we've gotten away from, right, as, as an industry, and the deputy is very well versed on this. So they may be charging that, but everybody that's charging for those four, they're up, they're up in the forties, 38, 36, but that was 2017. So I think we were really behind the curve there when they put that number in. Yeah, I think that's why you're seeing that jump. Other than that, we were pretty close with the other three, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, Chief, with the mileage, excuse me, we were by far the lowest rate in Norfolk County. That's why the jump is what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
And now we're at the higher end of the average with that rate. But other communities that are in that ballpark are likely going to be coming before their boards like we are and asking to increase their rate. But we're just trying to get back to what the industry norm is. We were, we, the bar we set was at the bottom of the barrel.
Well, the services you provide are, you know, A, obviously indispensable to, you know, to the community. But also, you know, a ride to, in an ambulance with ALS in Massachusetts is kind of fungible. And, you know, so it makes sense that whatever everyone else is charging, we should be charging essentially the same amount for the same service. So I support all of these, and I appreciate you helping me understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kavie. Mr. Carrera, did you have any questions or comments?
They're mostly comments. Want to thank you two guys for boldly stepping up and bringing this out, because I was on the board, the finance committee, and I saw this coming, and I'm like, we're, we're a little behind, and nobody really wanted to rock the boat. But I don't think it's rocking the boat. I think it just brought us, like you say, right in a, right in the line with everybody else. And the 44 doesn't scare me at all, because when, when gas and diesel are going to be eight and more, that's what it's going to be. So this is, this is proactive leadership. That's all I see is people that recognize something had to be done, and that goes to the deputy too. And I thank you guys for doing it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrera, for those comments, and thank you. You answered my question originally, it was, I was trying to understand, well, how did you arrive at your calculation, your increase? Like the BLS was 27% increase, the ALS was 20% increase, the ALS-2 emergency was 9% and so on. I said, well, it's, it's kind of random. But you explained it, you looked at comps, comparables, and I'm all set with that. With that said, to the board, I accept a motion to accept these rate increases. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just like to end in saying, and I, forgive me, this Sunday is Fire Friday Sunday, and of course, you're all welcome. We're actually having it at Freeman Street this year, 9:30. And again, just, I'm extending, you know, a invitation, not that you need one, but, you know, it's always enjoyable to see, you know, members of the select board and others from the town there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To the next, item number six, that's to continue discussions of Stoughton form of government and improving voter turnout. As my fellow board members, where we recall, on May 10th Select Board meeting, Mr. Sauer, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Hardman presented to us some data and information. The board tentatively discussed forming, I would call it a Stoughton Governance Study Committee, I don't know what you would call this, but somewhere in that, in that realm, to look at the structure of the town governance, voter turnout, and to support ways it could be instrumental in changing or improving our infrastructure and our turnout. At the time, we also discussed that each board member would identify one person to be on this committee, what, the study committee. And we wanted to hear more from you, if you have something to share. But the next steps is for the select board to identify one person each, so that would be a five-person committee to be on this study.
Good evening, members. I just think that last time we met and had a conversation about this, it's, it's really about looking in the mirror, about who we are as a government and asking that question. And any process begins with a first step. And that first step may be that we decide we like what we have, or we decide we want to make some sort of modification. So I really have nothing additional than the things that we discussed last time we met. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Larry Sauer, Precinct 2, and like Brian said, I don't, as far as being Chair of the Charter Review Committee, have anything to add to the conversation. Any other comments would be just as a citizen of the town of Stoughton, I do think that an exploratory committee that really looks at and, and looks at whether, whether the town really wants to make a change to the government or not, is really the first question, I think, that needs to be answered. You know, and then to go from there, i-if the town is in agreement with that, to explore what options that they have.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Sauer. Mr. Hardman?
Mike Hardman, Precinct 8. My concern still remains like getting people to the polls. If we change the government, we still have less than 5% of people voting, and we're still in the same problem we are. And I think that's through education, getting people involved more. I think sometimes they give us some more thought. I think that we got to make people realize that they're stakeholders in the community. I think every time I walk into this building, I look at those photos downstairs of the past selectmen, and some that I got a chance to know when I was a little cub reporter, and I saw what the contributions they have. And I always wonder what's going to be the next generation. And I think through this committee and educating people to vote, we'll recognize people that could be future leaders and replace all of us when we're retired or no longer in service, and I think that's an important part of it too. But I know some other communities that are tackling this too. Sharon's in a similar situation. Wallpole, even though they got 15% of the people voting in the town, are concerned too. So I think we're doing this with people, and our neighbors are doing the same thing at the same time. And I think by recognizing, and as Mr. Holmes says, looking in the mirror a little bit, maybe we can find out, make this better, get more people involved. Because if we don't get people involved, we're looking at a very tragic situation, you know, 10, 20 years down the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe this will be a study, it is not a commission to change the charter, but just to do a study. So with that, Mr. Carrera, did you want to comment or have a question?
Yeah, I want to comment. I don't think this board here should be controlling anything about voter turnout and getting in the middle of stuff like that. Voter turnout, I said before, starts at home, the education starts there. I couldn't wait to vote, it was the greatest thing. It's not up to me, as a selectman, to go out there and drag people through the door. That's up to Democratic Town Committee, Republican Committee. The League of Women Voters do unimaginable things to bring three towns together, to get voters out there. Changing your government is like just turning a bottle of water upside down. There's, there's nothing presented from any of you people saying what we're going to change, how we're going to change it, or we're going to study this thing for 10 years. It starts at home. It starts with groups that are nonprofit. That's how it gets out there. I don't think we should be doing anything to help people run, except there's a vote. When it's federal elections, you get a great turnout. Don't tell me we don't, because it just rolls. People that don't vote for three or five years, show up. And then they disappear and fall off the face of the earth. Because that's what they think is important. But it isn't up to me to run out there and thump the ground and say, you got to get involved. That's like forcing something on them. You have certain rights that you're born with to do it. One of them is to stand up at 18 and vote. You don't want to vote, that's too bad. But I don't, I don't think changing our form of government, turning it upside down, silencing 159 town meeting members to go counsel government, is going to bring people through the door for votes. You, you prove that to me. You tell me how. Every town is going through what we're going through. And I know it, because I, I watch it. My wife's the clerk, I see the numbers. She has a lot of friends, and they're all clerks, and some of them are like dejected with the numbers that come in. That's the way it is. The apathy out there to vote is like, if you and me vote, there's a group out there that thinks it's bad that we voted. But they're the first ones to bitch. So let's turn our town upside down and watch nobody vote. We can make things better, it's by voting different people in here. That's how, I was always taught that it was made better. I was glad to be asked to come back here. You bring something that you can offer the residents, they'll vote for you, they'll come out. I've never seen a school board election with two people win on a write-in. That's, that's like unheard of. Joe wins, nobody runs against him. When I ran, seven people ran. I don't know, maybe they hated me, maybe everybody likes Joe, I don't know. This is how it works. But back then, Steve Jerome would sit up here and he would do a talk show after the, after the thing, and he'd ask me, he goes, how do you feel now that, that, that you lost? He goes, what are you going to do? I says, I didn't lose anything. I was never a selectman to lose anything. That's how you got to look at things. That, it, we as selectmen are not going to go out and drag people through the door. It doesn't work that way. Raise your kids, what America is, and voting is one of the biggest things you can do. I didn't vote the way my parents voted, and I didn't really care. So that's, that's all I got to say is, I, I'm, I don't think we need a commission or a secret commission or whatever to change things. And I'm, and I don't think we should get people who have different duties with the state involved in something that they shouldn't be involved in. That's all I got to say.
Thank you so much, Mr. Carrera. And it just brings to the point that it's five different voices on this board, and we're all different. Does anyone else have a question, or Mr. McCrisky?
Not a question, just a comment, and I, I should.
Not a question, just a comment, and I share some of the sentiment from Mr. Carrera. But also, I think there is a need, we need to do a better job, I think, from this table through the town manager, on getting information out to people. I still say that our website is the most user-unfriendly website that I've seen. It doesn't, it doesn't get information into people's hands, it doesn't challenge people. I think we need to find, in my opinion, a way to keep our, our website interesting, user-friendly, and shy of being like a Facebook. You know, that we control the information that gets out, the factual information, and then let that be something that challenges somebody to want to be involved. We'll be talking about boards and commissions. Scott talked about people not stepping up to run. We should look ourselves in the mirror, and this is something that I've mentioned before, and I'd like to see us do more with it, is to have, I think we need somebody to work with the IT department and our department heads, whether it's one of these little gurus down at the high school, that these guys and ladies that, you know, know YouTube videos and all these splashy things. We all go to the Mass Municipal, you know, the years except for the pandemic, we go, and they have a contest on what is the best-looking town report. You know, ours is the biggest piece of white and black ink that I've ever seen, and it's dry, there are no pictures in it, there are, you know, no way for people to know what their town is doing. It's like a report card, you know? And I think there's a great opportunity. I've said this a while back, I think that's what we should be looking to do, is to, to Scott's point, you know, and the work that you guys can do, but how do you make people want to vote? I mean, if people don't realize why their vote is needed, I feel bad. I mean, our country right now, I mean, it's just, I don't even want to get going on that, you know, is where we are as a country, and how other countries look at us as, at one time, the world leader, and now the world joke. You know, that our, some of our rights that we get are being ignored, you know, or used against us in some ways. And so we're not going to make anybody vote, but I think we can engage people to become interested in their community if they know more. You know, and I think that's where we have to diversify ourselves, to find out what people are looking for. Survey monkeys, survey monkeys on Facebook cost virtually nothing, but you get real, raw information, because people aren't using their names, they're going to be a little bit more willing to give you their feelings. I serve on two, I chair one and serve on another national committee with about 5,000 members. And for me to do my job as a chair, I use the survey monkey, because people are going to give their honest truth when responding to questions. It helps me keep my membership engaged. You know, and I think that we've got to look at something like that. And I don't know what else is out there. I would, I know we have a lot of talented people in this building, I'd like to see what they can do to work with the IT department and to look out at other communities. I know I did that one time, and I found more information on a subject matter on another town's website, and I couldn't believe that we didn't have it on ours. So until we can really say that we're offering the best services to our residents to engage them in the town that they live in and pay taxes in, you know, that's, we're going to deal with this. I mean, I think people are going to get involved. I mean, how many people right now know that we have, you know, openings on committees? We're going to talk about it, but, you know, we should be out there saying, hey, listen, we need committee members, do you have expertise in this? Volunteering your town, make a difference, you know, be a part of the future of the town. But we all sit here, and I hate to sound like, and admit it, that we sound like talking heads, which is half the damn problem. You know, let's get together, and let's come up with a solution. Let's get people to disagree with each other, which there's plenty of that in Stoughton, we know, right? But they all, when it comes right down to it, they're all passionate about their positions and the love for their town. So, I mean, that's what I think we need to do, and you know how I feel, Madam Chair, about these big commissions and subcommittees and the committee of the committee? I mean, at one time, we had three layers of the same issue in committees, you know? It doesn't make sense. We need to work smarter, not harder. Let's ask for volunteers. We have retired teachers that live in this town, we have retired, you know, business people that live in this town. I know of two score executives, you know, that volunteer their time, you know, mentoring young business leaders. I mean, we've got to do something like that as well. We have to take the bull by the horns and say, this is what we want. Charge somebody to do the job, get a committee together, charge them to do the job, and then let them know, tell them, come to us. If you have a need, come to us so that we can make sure that you get the resources. You know, and I think the biggest thing is right in front of us, and it's the elephant in the room, is we have a ridiculously user-unfriendly website. There's no content on it, we have committees and commissions that are not putting their minutes on it. What if somebody wanted to read about, you know, a zoning or a planning board issue? And I know a lot of those two boards do put them on there. I had dropped here, you know, the Council on Aging newsletter. Council on Aging, they do a better job in notifying the citizens, the senior citizens of what's going on than we do on our town website. They do. I mean, it's there, the residents that frequent the senior center know what's coming up for a whole month in advance. You know, we have our recreation department, they have their site, and they're using Facebook. Everything should be on the town website, Facebook should feed to the town website. How many times have you been on Facebook, folks, and you click on a link, next thing you know, you're buying something from Amazon, right? All you wanted to do is look at it, right? It takes you right to the checkout page, right? We can do that as well. We've got to use this the right way. We have people here that can get the job done, we have to task them to doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, and want to piggyback on that comment. You know, I just asked a small subset, a small sample size, well, do you know what's going on in the town? Do you know how to maneuver through the website? And they said, oh, no, we just moved here. Oh, where's your website? Because you can put in Town of Stoughton, and it'll take you one way, or you could put Stoughton, and it takes you to another community altogether. So we have a group that are right in front of us that can help. But with that said, I'm going to ask Mr. Gito if he had any comments, just to keep this moving along.
Oh, that's good. We have these little successes here in Hailoo. I mean, you know, it's happened before, and it'll happen again. Thank you. You want to be the Chair of the Committee? Yeah, that's the problem.
Very seriously about what kinds of things we present to the town, the people in the town, so that in fact, they are involved in the decisions that are made in the town. We've talked for a long time about having a three- or five-year capital plan, about having, having plans for what it is that we want to do. We couldn't, we couldn't describe a vision for the town as a board, but we need to be able to do that. And we need to be able to take the information, put it out there, and get response to that. That's how, in fact, you create a community that is interested and engaged. And we can do that if we want to do it. But we have to dedicate ourselves to doing that, we have to involve the town employees, we have to involve other groups within the town to help to have that happen. That's how we create interest in the town, because there's something at the end of the road that's not just a vote, it's perhaps a new park, perhaps a different thing that happens in the town in a different way than how we have done it in the past. So I'm just expanding on what you said, but that's what we need to do if we want to create a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Vice Chair, Kavy.
Just come back to me after.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, I appreciate the conversation, I think that there's a lot, a lot here. I think the one thing that I would ask that we do is, you know, we have three people here, two of them are from the, from the Charter Review Committee, and Mr. Hardman's out here on his own, separate. I think that they're bringing actually two very different questions to us, and I think it's important that we, like, bifurcate them and not, not somehow, like, link them together, that the, are interested in getting people to vote, and the purpose that serves is not necessarily connected with the form of government. It might be, but it might not be. So I would say, as far as just getting people engaged, I think that having, putting actually some attention into finding the, a way to inspire people to show up, which I think is ultimately probably some kind of a marketing question, more than anything else. It's not in my wheelhouse, I don't know what it is, but if we can inspire people to actually show up and vote, and there's people who want to do that, who want to make that happen, I think that's great. And I kind of ask, I can't help but ask, you know, does the Select Board actually have a role in this? Like, you know, I think similar to, to Mr. Carrera's comments, and, because I can also envision a circumstance where, you know, the five of us are in cahoots, and we fill a board with people that will only inspire our, our people to show up and vote, right? There's sort of a, there is an element in there that, that could be manipulated in a way that is exactly the opposite of what I think all, where all of our hearts currently are. But some future board, might not, might not be the case. But I looked up the Selectman Handbook from Massachusetts, just to kind of like see what it has to say. It doesn't give a really solid answer, but I would love to, just to read it, just to, you know, kind of get us all on the same page. The Board of Selectmen's primary election responsibilities include calling elections, appointing elected personnel from lists of candidates supplied by the majority political parties, and designating voting precincts, which is all we know, we're all aware of that. The conduct of state and national elections is regulated by state law, local elections are governed by both the state law and the town's charter or bylaws. So I'm not, I'm not telling anybody they don't, anything they don't know, but I just kind of want to, like, say, like, this, this idea of, you know, where can we, where we ought to influence things, I would say, does actually have more to do with our idea of, of, you know, charter involvement, which might be something about, like, a form of government change, or something about our elections, like, something I actually really feel passionate about is, which is moving our current voting, appointing locations out of the schools. Currently, right now, we're not doing that, we know that everyone here in this room knows that we're in violation of the charter for this. We have eight precincts, and we have, and, you know, we have two precincts voting in one school, and precinct seven is voting in a school that's not even located in its own precinct. So the West School is in Precinct Eight. So everyone here, we're all violating the charter, we're all okay with it, nobody said anything, this was decided in 1977, we're all very well aware of it, the law's only a couple, like, a month older than I am, and, and so, we know that we're doing this. If we can try to modernize something like that, and say, you know, maybe, I'm just throwing this out here, but some people talk about Saturday elections, or moving it to one location, like the high school gymnasium, you know, I sort of raised the idea of, like, this polling location, and Saturday elections, high school and gymnasium, show up every single time. Like, everyone independently comes up with this as the solution to the problem. Now, I'm not saying it is, but I think those are, those are the places where we have really a direct influence, and I think it's something we really have to, have to explore. With 3.5% of the vote, in a good election, we might get 16 or 17%, that's still 1,800 people. You know, that's, that's not that many people. So I think we ought to take a look at, at that. As far as changing of our form of government, I think it's like a really intriguing question. It really goes to the heart of, like, you know, the things I care about and study and want to say, like, you know, what does it mean to, to, to live in a democracy? I've probably said this to people in the past, but, you know, when I watch children's shows, and my son was getting older, right, he's growing up, I remember watching a couple of them in a row, and whenever they had, like, a leader come in, it was always a king or a queen, right? We always see this with, or prince. We see it also with, with Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood, right? They had, like, the whole idea of, like, people living together, you have, like, the king, the king and whatnot. The idea of being, like, ruled by somebody else seems to be, like, so innate that when you're trying to communicate it, to children, you go directly with the monarchy. This idea of us ruling ourselves, essentially, you know, determining our, our own destiny, and, and working collaboratively to do that, is perhaps not natural, in a sense, but also, there's no better way to achieve personal freedom, and, and there's no better way to live, in my opinion, than to do exactly that. So, you know, it's going to be a little bit messier, and it's going to require us to collaborate in ways that, that might be very annoying, where it might be nicer just to have, you know, somebody come in and say, you're right, you're wrong, and that's, you know, I made the law, you're wrong, that's it. Instead, we've got to work through these kinds of problems. And how we, how we do that successfully, you know, we have the system that's, that's worked, you know, it's, we're getting things done, 300 years, we're still doing it. But there was no high-speed internet 300 years ago, there's no YouTube, like, the way people, like, live their lives now is different enough for me to say, you know, just because it's been working for 300 years actually does not mean that it's, this is something that can work for in perpetuity. On the other hand, you know, you also look at a lot of other types of forms of government, and can we say definitively that they are objectively superior? Not really. The question is complicated enough that I really do want to have to, you know, be part of that conversation and, and partake in it. But I also really would prefer to see somebody who actually has some education in this work on this question, in an objective way. And, you know, this is my own view, but I wouldn't mind, you know, in some future town meeting, either in the, you know, the special if we have one, or the next annual, set aside money for a consultant, you know, some sort of a government, somebody, I know there's got to be somebody who does this, right? Looks at these kinds of, kinds of questions. Consultant to, to do an examination of our form of government, the way we live, where the efficiencies are, and then if this form of government is working, or if there's something else we should explore. Putting this vote in front of town meeting also, I think, would be valuable, because I, there's nothing that any of us can do in this regard, really, without town meeting also having a say in it. This ultimately is a decision that town meeting has to make. And, and if they choose not to fund such a study, then they have already made the decision, in a sense, that they're kind of happy with the way things are. If they choose that they do want to fund a study, then that at least gives me some impression that this has some viability in the, in the community, and is worth exploring further. It doesn't have to be very expensive, but it, I think it's still worth running it past the people who I view as the, really the ultimate decision-makers in this town, and that's the members of town meeting.
Back to Mr. McCrisky.
Yeah, just wanted to, I know one thing we could do like this, to inform our residents. We could start Select Board Member Kavy's YouTube chats that he used to do after the meetings, was, if anybody here has ever seen them, Steve would go on YouTube following a selectman's meeting and just give a little recap. On form of government, real quick, I don't think we should be asking the town meeting whether they want to change their form of government. We should be asking the residents if they believe that they're getting out of town government what they want. And we won't know the answer to that until we start communicating with our residents. And it's, the best way to do it is to get things out, all sorts of newsletters, live feeds on the website, you know, in addition to what we get through SMAC, more publicity on SMAC. They have their homepage when there's not any airing on a particular channel, thank God, that's more now, but community bulletin board, our meeting's coming up, you know, our meeting schedule, our web- our meeting schedule, our website right now is the best thing we have. We should have it set up that it flashes a picture of downtown, or we were just dealing with the Turnpike Street, that was on, we do have similar on Facebook, is the Town Crier that's run by Roberta Harbeck, you know, that's out there, she does a good job of getting information out there. That should also be, every week, featured right on the homepage of our website. Every way that we can communicate with our residents, they will get involved. And when they see things, they see things they don't like as well, watching a board or a commission meeting, you know, they'll be vocal, which is good, you know, and they should be vocal to our, you know, to us, we're the ones, they're the, we're the only ones in this community that are elected by the population. You know, and I would love, I love when somebody comes up and gives me, you know, constructive criticism. And, you know, sometimes I've said, "Well, we can set up a little committee, would you be interested in, in serving on it?" And that's, and you know, you see the smoke on the feet, right out. But we're not doing enough to engage people to want to be a part of the process, because I'll admit, sometimes this process is even something I want to jump out a window. I mean, it's crazy, but like they say, it's like hot dogs. If you like them, you don't want to watch them be made, right? But I just think that, you know, and back up what Mr. Gieto said, we have a great opportunity that, just on our website alone, we could have a weekly survey, Survey Monkey, right on the website. I mean, how many times do you go on, again, Facebook or the internet, and a little poll comes up, "Do you think the president's doing a great job?" How many people just say, "Yep, I'll put my two cents in," right? You don't know who they are, but we need that kind of feedback from our residents. So, I, I just think, and it's, again, we don't, it shouldn't be anything that's a lot of money to do. I would bet money that there's somebody out in our, in our citizenry that would volunteer their time, you know, as well as the people we have on staff. I wanted to see what we can do to encourage younger people to vote. I had a gentleman, a young man come through the Historical Society one time, and I, you know, we're talking about, what do we do to get people into look at history, and learn a little bit more about history? And I said to this young, I think sixteen-year-old young fellow, and I said, "What would interest you to come in here more?" And he goes, "Real things." He said, "I'd like to see sports history," right? Little known fact, anybody who doesn't know it, that the pattern of a baseball was first designed in Stoughton by Elijah Drake. He just never made it to patent. There's history in this town for sports. There's history in this town that the first iron lung was made by Dr. Forest Byrd in Stoughton, right? Get that out there. I had a gentleman call me today that his nephew did his thesis on the town of Stoughton, which I can't wait to read myself. This is a younger gentleman that was writing a document on what he sees in his town. That might open some eyes, too, you never know. But these are the things that are out there, it's right in front of us, and we're not capturing it. So, I'm not, I'm going to stop there. I would love to see us get a committee going, focused on just utilizing our website, enhancing it, and I think that's going to roll over to at least getting some people to know what's going on. And then, how do we capture them and bring them in?
Yes, Mr.?
I'm all done. Mr. McCrisky, I agree with some of the things you said, probably ninety percent, ninety-five percent of what you said, but I also-
Ninety percent there, a hundred percent with Lou. I'm going to roll tonight, I've got to buy a lottery ticket, this is going great.
But I also believe in, in transparency, and we have, we have at least three people at the table that it's coming up with ideas that can present to us, one, how to get more students involved, and that is, there's a civics committee at the high school, how to bring them on board. We have a deck, a direct connect with the form of government, or not changing it, but to look at it, look at the charter, because the processes that we're actually doing are not documented in the charter. Mr. Vice Chair Kayvey brought that up, but, you know, there are only so many hours in the day, and we need more people involved. So, it goes back to that one-year committee, call a study committee, to actually bring something back to us, like that expert, like that pundit, whose job it is to study the various forms of government and present to us the pros and cons of each form of government, if that's what we as a board want to take place. But on the ground level is, let's engage the community, let's engage the citizens, let's utilize resources we have right in front of us. I bet if I asked Mr. Hartman, Mr. Sauer, Mr. Holmes, "Are you on board with forming, being a part of this committee if we decided to, to form one?" They would likely say yes. So, going back to May tenth, when we, the last thing we said, we were going to think about having a study committee. Can I get a motion for a study committee? And then we can discuss it.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Carr-
Can I cut in for a minute here?
Oh, yeah, sure. Oh, I was-
I'm going to take you back to town meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
And this might help you understand how people feel about their government.
Can you please put them on mute? Thank you very much.
Town meetings reps, they're new ones, long town meeting reps, and there was a motion made by somebody to just vote the budget without going through it, and it failed miserably, three to one. Does that not tell you a little something about the form of government, that town meeting is not ready to turn that over and throw it out the door? That vote, if you watched and took it in, that's what you get out of that. I read what Mr. Kayvey read, I have the same book at home, I understand what's going on. It's not for this board to control elections, that's all I'm going to tell you. Not going to get in the middle of it, it will not be part of anything. It's going to coerce the changing of this democracy system that's in place. If there was a problem, there'd be a wave of people on board about this. I don't see it. I see three people showed up, and, I don't want to be ignorant, but-
Didn't have anything to say?
Didn't have anything to say? This gentleman started all his numbers from the past. Why would I support a commission to go nowhere? And I'm being honest with you, don't waste my time, please.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. I believe Mr. Gieto is a town meeting rep, I'm a town meeting rep, Mr. Vice Chair Kayvey is a town meeting rep, and you are as well.
This is nineteen eighty-eight.
And yes, we do our due diligence. We don't want things to just be rubber stamped, right? So, why is that any different than forming a study committee to see how can we move forward, how we can improve? But with that-
I didn't see any, I didn't see any rubber stamped at town meeting.
No, I'm just saying, here, with us.
I saw them go department by department. People yelled out, they wanted to, because they wanted, there was no rubber stamping. There wasn't. I didn't see it.
We, we don't rubber stamp. What we do is look at progress, how we move forward.
Speeding it up is going to do the service to the people in town, either.
When we talk about speed, we're talking about efficiencies. And with that said, I will, Mr. Vice Chair Kayvey had, he keeps kind of elbowing me.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So, I feel tugged here.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is that, though, I definitely see where you're coming from, Mr. Carrera, and I respect that. I, also, the fact that the, the committee that looks at changes to our charter is, are ultimately the people who brought this to us, all town meeting reps, I know they didn't vote unanimously, but the fact that our Charter Review Committee has brought to us a concern that this might not be the right form of government for us, is significant to me. It means a lot, that the people who town meeting had, who they've elected, and our moderator have appointed to a committee meant to look at our charter, are questioning whether or not this is the right way for us to go forward with. So, I think that's very significant, and certainly worth me asking, you know, sort of entertaining the question. I think, I think it's very much worth it. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Sauer, did you want to contribute something a little bit more?
Yes, if I could just make a comment, I would just like to say that we didn't ask to be here tonight, we were asked to be here. So, just to answer you, Scott, we did the last time on, on May tenth, asked to come and present the resolution, which is what we did. And the resolution really just asked for the Select Board to explore whether there was an interest in the town in changing government. There was no suggestion as to whether that should happen, or what form that government should take. It was really just to open the conversation about that. And, you know, I, I don't think, I, I don't actually know what the opinions of the other people here are. They may want a change in government, they may be satisfied with what we have. I do agree with Mr. Hartman, Hartman, that more people voting is better than less people voting, but, you know, I don't think anybody's saying there should be a radical change in our government. I think we need to ask the people of the town, are you satisfied with the government that we have now? And if not, how can we change it to make it better?
Mr. McCrisky.
Again, I don't know where I feel on us being involved, but I'm not a town meeting representative, but I did watch the meeting when I had returned from a trip, and I remember hearing and seeing the people talking about, "We have a responsibility to look at the budget, review of the budget." And then towards the end of the night, I think the end of the night, there was an opportunity, and I'm going to say this upfront, I'm not in favor or against any article or any movement by any resident in any way. Everybody has a right to be heard, no matter what, but the last order of business was an article that was brought forward only to let the residents be heard on the CPC article. Was it allowed to go to the residents? No. There's a problem. There's a problem. So, you can't say on one side, "We have an obligation to look at the article," you know, to the, to look at the budget, but then, a tax that the residents pay to be reduced, not, not obliterated, not abolished, anything, just let the residents be heard. Why are we afraid of that? But that government, that town meeting, didn't vote to let the residents be heard. They're the ones that are right there on, they have the highest executive authority of all of us, the taxpayers, the people that pay the bills, and we need a process that lets every resident be heard, one way or another. There are boards and commissions that this board, there's five people here, we appoint, and then it's hands off. The residents can't touch those boards or commissions. It's even some cases difficult for us to remove somebody on particular boards if we feel they're not doing the right job. It can be difficult, but the residents cannot touch those boards and commissions. If I had my way, everybody that sits, zoning board, planning board, water department, all these would be elected by the residents. That's what, that's what democracy's all about, not a system that encapsulates people and protects them as a part of the, the process within. So, that's just my feelings on it, and I'm not going to say another word on the issue.
Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, I appreciate the words of Mr. Sauer, I'll echo, I'll echo them, but I'll also say that he was a dissenting vote, so he's doing his obligation here to represent the business of the Charter Review Committee by representing what we wanted by a majority vote. And again, I'm echoing that this is simply about starting a conversation. Nobody's saying, "Let's skip right ahead and ask the five-member board to appoint a Charter Commission under the state law." Nobody's talking about that. I have never said that. All this really is about is asking the question. If we can do better with what we're doing for this form of government that we have now, if that's the wish of the voters, then that's all, that's all I'm hoping that, to see come out of this. It's simply about asking a question, it's not about skipping ahead. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hartman.
I don't, being a town meeting member, I take that responsibility serious, and I have reservations about giving that up, echo Mr. Carrera's point, but I also want to know that we're not operating-
You are a town meeting rep, is that correct?
Town meeting rep, yes. But I also want to echo that we're living in a different world, we don't have a newspaper every day that talks about what you guys are doing. If you don't sit and watch the meetings, you don't see it. So, we've got to find ways to reach out to people. We also got to realize that Stoughton is changing. We're having people moving in here every day. If you try to sell your house, great, you're in a great spot, because people want to come here, and a lot of it's because of people being involved. We're hot now, but what comes with that is, comes with people from cities, other countries, other areas. Where town meeting is a foreign concept, and having a stakeholder in how things done, it just doesn't work. It's not the way to look at it. So, I think education is the key to this, whether we change form of government or not, people have to be involved, and we have to educate people. I agree with Mr. McCrisky about the website, and I agree with you two videos, you've got to get people out there, because we don't, it's not, it's not going to go up, things aren't going to get better if we don't do stuff to get people involved. And I agree with Ms. Carr, I've written tons of editorials in those newspaper days, telling people to vote, and it doesn't make one iota of a difference. But telling them they can vote, and they're eligible to vote, and what the issues are, is important, and getting people involved young is important. One of the ideas I'd like to see us have, working off the town meeting concept, is have a student town meeting, where we are, the representatives, the board has, board mentors a student, the town moderator mentors a student, town clerk mentors, mentors a couple of students because she has a lot, big job to do, and we elect, they elect the precinct reps, and we see how they go through, and we let them vote on school issues, issues of the town. Because one reason we want to get there is, we see with Spelling Bees, who goes to Spelling Bees? Parents go to Spelling Bees. Parents are going to go to student town meeting, and then you're going to get the one person that says, "Hey, I like, I'm involved with disabilities, I work in, like, myself, I work helping people with disabilities, I want to be in the disability commission, I can make a difference." Maybe you see somebody that's a builder and wants to be on planning board, you get people involved that way, and you do it through their children, and getting people involved young. I mean, the people who grew up in this town, I'm a newcomer, I've been here since nineteen eighty-two, so I don't really qualify as a Stoughton born and bred, but, you know, you guys grew up with people telling you what, telling you and showing you the way things are in town, and we don't have that as much now because we've changed, and we've got to replace that somehow, and that's communicating, educating, getting people involved. They had, you know, I always tell people, you in a house here, you're a stockholder in the town of Stoughton, let's try to explain it to people, and decisions we make at town meeting goes right to their wallet. I mean, you can take the money out of your wallet and give it to us then. So, that's why I take town meeting responsible. I don't know about new form of government. Mr. Holmes and Mr. Sauer are very qualified men, and good men, and honorable men, and I'm sure they'll come up with the good ideas, and I look forward to hearing and working with them on it. But I think the main thing is, you've just got to tell people what's out there. We've got to realize it's, it's two thousand and twenty-two, it's not nineteen sixty-two. And we've got to make sure to reach people and educate people, and way of reaching people is a lot different than putting an ad in a newspaper that doesn't exist now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hartman. I see town clerk is shaking her head in affirmative. So, is, can I get a motion to form a study commission?
Could we table this to another time? Really? I'd rather just vote it down. That, that might be the better thing. I mean, I think that we're not necessarily hearing that there's a huge need for that, but I mean, if, if we want to think about it some more, then, then that would be fine, but...
So, okay. We came here tonight and referencing May tenth, we were going to form a study committee. We heard, so this would be the second time we met. We've thought about it, it is now June seventh, almost a month later. We can vote it up, we can vote it down, or we can appoint the members, then we can appoint members to the study to see how they would structure this that would be comfortable for all of us on this board, not to disrupt the form of government we currently have, but to explore what could be done a little more efficiently and better. This would be short-term, this is not a multi-year study committee. This would be short-term, this is not a multi-year study committee. It is actually looking at the resources that we have that we can promote better. Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
On the thoughts of the actual committee, and I'm more inclined to vote to move forward with something, not to table it, but honestly, with some of the things that was said tonight, I'm, I think I'd like to chew on it a little bit. I, I'm still prone to wanting to move forward with something, but honestly, some comments that tonight that were made just really kind of made me have one of my, my dull moments that I, I don't know what to think. And I just, I would like to think it through a little bit. There are things that have made me question whether we should do it, but then there's other things that make me think that we are the people that are elected, you know, by the residents, and we see the issues as well. And I, I just think I'd like to chew on it a little bit, again, that only so that we can just take as much information in. I like to, as you know, I always say, it's about the facts. It's about the facts. And I'm not sure that what I'm thinking is factual, or, you know, I'd just like to find out what other communities have done when, because I guarantee people will think what I'm thinking now, because I can see the good and the bad. And I think we've talked about that before. There are towns that have gone one way and regret it, and other towns say it's the greatest thing in the world. And I'd like to learn more about the towns that didn't like it, how, how did they start and so forth. And, and I would say that I would get my answers, I can, I know people I can call, I've been around long enough that I have a pretty long list. And that's just me, I'm, I'm probably more, I won't vote to, I will not support voting it down, but if we could just maybe put it on the next agenda, you know, I would, I would be ready to, to vote up or down then, that's for sure. I, you know, so that's just my thought, Madam Chair. Sorry to hit you with it like that, but it's just what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I also have a, just a-
Vice Chair?
Additional comment. I, I actually, I still feel committed to the idea that I think that the concerns that we've been brought are, are two different concerns. One is voter turnout, and the other is the form of government, and that they're not necessarily connected, but I think they both need addressed, and, you know, in one way or another. So I think, I think that a lot of the concerns I currently have, I share with you, Mr. McCrisky, revolve around, you know, how exactly to approach this question of form of government in a way that, that is, you know, not amateur hour, right? Like, we're not just going to-
Right, exactly.
-shoot from the hip and decide, you know, decide how, what the, how we're going to move forward. But questions related to our efforts just to, you know, make elections easier for people to participate in, provide information more clearly perhaps, or just find the channels of providing the information. I, I think those are things that I, I would feel comfortable moving forward with today if, if, if we're looking to create, you know, create some sort of a commission for that or some sort of a board for that. I would be on, on board with it. Or if we just want to say, you know, there's people out there who can take care of it, and we'll just support them in what they're doing.
What was that motion again, please?
Not quite a motion yet. Actually, in fact, I wouldn't mind just, just acknowledging that I have had some conversations in this area with our town clerk, because elections are very much in her wheelhouse, and, and anything that, that happens with elections ultimately goes through that office, and they have a gigantic responsibility that they take, in my experience, very seriously to, to make sure that, that things are informed. And I think that she's already done some work in this area, and I, I don't want to misrepresent any of that work, but I think it's worth maybe hearing some things that she's done, running this through the clerk's office might actually be a better approach. I don't know if you want to call Stephanie Carrera.
Yes, this is not the typical process, but I've seen Mrs. Carrera raising her hand, and she talked with me prior to the meeting, and I said that I would allow some time to hear her voice, because her voice in this matter is very important. Ms. Carrera, would, our town clerk, would you please step forward? If you want to practice social distancing, then we'll make that happen as well.
Whatever committee, I, I just want to start by saying, whatever committee that the board makes, I would like to be part of it, if that, if, if that's okay with the board. Just because I know the laws, and I've been working on some things with Mr. Kaby, and just want to address a couple of things that came out about the low voter turnout for this past election. Just so everybody knows, people were very upset that we had two elections, one in February and one in April, and didn't understand why we couldn't have that question about the fire station on the April ballot. They found, our office got berated by people saying, well, this was stupid, no one's on this, why couldn't we have the question on this one? And I tried to explain about the rates, but they didn't want to hear it, just, just so you know. So, but there's, I've, working with Mr. Kaby, I came up with a working committee as, in my goal meeting that I had with the board, you suggested perhaps because of the low voter turnout, having a committee. So I took the initiative to create one, and I was unaware of this, so I apologize. I wasn't trying to circumvent the board or the Charter Review Committee. I took the bull by the horns, as you suggested. And the people that I have on the committee are Mr. Kaby, Mr. Hardman, Kamel Drews, Rebecca Moxon, myself, and Pat Yanikowski, and I asked Sandra Souza. I thought that would be a good core. If other people want to join or, you know, talk to me about things, I'm so willing to listen. I just don't want it to be a huge committee, and no one's, no, no, nothing against the FinCom Committee, but when you have 17 people, you get 17 personalities, and sometimes things work at a snail's pace, and I don't want that. Now, the next election that I have coming up is the state primary. The state primary is the day after Labor Day, so I am expecting a low voter turnout. But again, the state advertises, and they do all the printing and stuff, so, for the ballots. So I'm not, but I am expecting a low voter turnout because people, especially parents, no offense, they're not going to care. They want to get their kids in school, they want to get them enrolled, they need to get school shopping, books, computers, whatever. So I'm expecting a low voter turnout, and I want everybody in, in here to know and, and at home watching, because for parents, that's much more important. November, we will have a hu, we will have a, I won't say not like the presidential, but we will have a good, a good percentage of that. So I want you to know that. And as far as, you know, government, I know that the town of Randolph, to help Mr. McCrisky, they changed government, they have a board of selectmen, but they don't have town meeting, something very unique in Randolph. And I'm friends with the town clerk, so she said, no, she doesn't have to do town meeting anymore. Does she like it? She told me she didn't, and she didn't really elaborate. So I just, I know, Mr. McCrisky knows the town manager over there, so I just wanted to kind of let him know that. But I just want anyone that, you know, if there's any committee, I'd, I'd like to be on it. I actually thought before this happened that the Charter Review Committee was going to start going through our charter, because I did ask a member, when you come to the town clerk section, could you let me know, because I'd like to sit in on it, as I know different things have changed, and we could bring them up into the millennium instead of, like Mr. Kaby said, 1977, but I was in high school then, so cut it out. But, so just so, whatever, whatever I can do, but I thought that they would be going through each person's section so that we could bring it present, because what's wrong with our charter is that it's old. Times have changed, like Mr. Hardman said, there's no more newspapers, different things like that. The times have changed, but our charter has not. And when your charter is silent on things, it's not allowed, such, even with the zoning bylaw. If this, and I was taught that when I worked downstairs in zoning, if the bylaw is silent, nope. And things are happening that will come before the board, unique things that are going to bring businesses to the downtown, but it's, you know, tooth-pulling to get it through because our charter or the zoning isn't modern. So whatever I can do to help, I would ask the town, the town charter committee if, if they would consider letting me help on different things with their group, and if there's any committees made, that I, I could be on them, just because I know different things that they might not know, and that they might know things that I don't know. So, thank you.
Yeah, so to that point, I, you know, there's already a committee put together. It serves exactly the purpose, I think, that Mr. Hardman's trying to accomplish.
Same, same people.
Yeah, many of the same people. I think that it, we can, you know, there's, there's a independence through the clerk's office that I think is important. Additionally, running this through town staff makes, you know, we can, we can ask for updates and stuff like that, but we don't have to, you know, search down a committee and remember who's on what or anything like that, it just runs through her. I, I think this might be a good way to resolve that particular issue, and then just come back again at a later time. I don't think we need a motion for anything, but come back again and, and discuss maybe further this idea of, of examining our form of government.
I do agree with that, Vice Chair Kaby. I do so appreciate our town clerk Carrera's leadership in this area. It's the same people that we're talking to right now, it's the same idea, and basically the same scope. So if we can agree with that, just, I see some nod, head nods in affirmative. Yeah. So if we need to get updates, we'll go through our town clerk Carrera. If we want to do something a little more expansive based on her findings, then we can take that step at that time.
Yeah.
Are we all set?
So we can move on to the next time.
Yes, done. Oh, Ms.-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, clear on three businesses ratings. Your every time it's not adhered, it's not an hour.
We will get to them.
We would handle it some.
Yes.
How can you be business friendly when you keep people waiting? Some of them have attorneys.
Yes, Mrs. Walsh. The next on our agenda is to appoint Old Colony Planning Council, Martis Dell and Craig Parsfell as alternate.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I agree as well. The next is, this will be a discussion on select board appointments to the boards and committees based on the vacancies. What we have is, we have people that are non-attendants to the boards and commissions. We're not seeing meeting minutes, they're not posted. Actually, some of the boards and committees aren't meeting. We need to get a handle on this, and maybe through, I think the first step is something that Mr. Carrera said a couple of meetings ago, is go through the chairs. One area that specifically needs to be addressed is our planning board. Our planning board requires for review a minimum of three people. I had planned on tonight appointing Mr. Carrera to that board until I received town council that a select board member cannot work in dual capacity.
How could you do that?
So, but, but we need to really address, because we have, we cannot move our permits forward because we require a minimum of three people. And I'm going to defer to Mr. Tisdell on this before we go through what steps we should take.
Thank you, Chair Roberts. Now, you bring a great point up. In my job before this one, dealing with the planning board, it is an, almost an everyday occurrence. Permits are come, always coming in for site plan review or special permits, sometimes both at the same time. To have economic development occur in this town, keeping business growing, we have to have a fluid planning board. And I know Mr. Scardino's working hard himself out there, but he needs a full board. I believe there's one resignation, correct me if I'm wrong, and there's another vacant, there's another spot coming up. We need a solid planning board in place to, to move these projects forward. If somebody's coming in for a special permit, it takes four to, to, to vote a special permit in. If you only have three, that cannot occur. So projects will be delayed just for special permits. And then for site plan review, you need three. But either way, it's not a good approach, I don't think, just having the bare minimum. You need a full board in case one person doesn't agree with a project, so things can keep on moving. In a nutshell, that's, that's what it's about.
So any ideas we need to advertise? Oh, Mr. McCrisky.
I was just going to say that we have our June, we have our appointments up in June. Do we know right now where we are on our annual appointments for June?
Yes, we do, except for we're a little fuzzy, because there is some language that says if a person doesn't have certain attendance record, then they have been considered to vacate their position. But then on the flip side of that, it's, they haven't, it's the requirement for them to send in a letter of resignation.
But there's also an abandonment of the position, and that's what we have in two cases.
Yes.
Okay, so if they're not going to send us a letter, I've made two attempts to reach out to one of them and has ignored me, which is fine. That's an abandonment of the position. We need to fill those positions ASAP. Do we know all of our appointments? And I will go through you, through our town manager or to Deb. Do we know who's up for appointment in June of this year?
We received a email from Reggie a couple-
Yeah, that was a complete list, though. Now, I'm looking for, I mean, we have to pick those out. So what, what I would say is, we're looking at right now the 7th, and we should be ready, but we need an accurate time where people can apply and we can advertise it, to get people to apply. We'll have people that are going to reapply without a doubt, you know, and they know when their, their term is up. So what I would be looking to do is, we take all the application, all the vacancies that are up, including, you know, people up for renewal and the vacancies. We also need additional members on the zoning board for alternates, that they've been short, you know, on the alternate end. So this would give us, if we picked up the next three days, I believe that we should be able to come up with an accurate list of what we need, and we probably could make the shopper's guide by the, the end of the 10th for an advertisement. Deborah, is that too, too lean for you?
If you put an ad in the paper, if I could just interrupt you, the reason we didn't set a definite date for when the applications are due by, or the applications are due by a certain date, the 15th, I believe, was the date, but we didn't set a definite date for the board to hear them, because we thought, you know, depending on how many responses come in, we would take all of the applicants for the boards that need a quorum, that are very short right now, and hear those first.
Okay, so we have a deadline of the 15th for that?
For all of the applicants.
Okay, or when was that put in?
It probably will come out tomorrow.
Okay, so it was put in last week. Okay, good. So if that's the 15th, we should be ready, you know, for the, the 21st to vote those, those positions. So I think if we, if we get that, I would ask that once you have a, the list comply, compiled, that we could get that, you know, on the 16th, or, you know, the end of, you know, before Friday, if we can get them so that each one of us can, you know, do our little bit of homework that we're going to do. And then we'll know whether we actually have to do a little bit more. We may not get a good response. We may not get a good response, uh, and we may need to go out and almost ask residents, you know, would you like to serve? Because, you know, to somebody's point, a lot of people look at this and they don't want to be involved because they see the same old faces and I'll, hey, listen, I'll take the hit. I've been the same old face for a while. But, uh, you know, we need new people. And the reason you see the same old faces is because new people aren't stepping forward. So it, it may be that we all have to do our best to, you know, try to encourage that person who, you know, is pretty critical, you know, has all these great ideas when you meet them in the coffee shop and say, "Hey, there's a vacancy. Why don't you put your money where your mouth is?" You know, and maybe we can get people to apply. But I would like to have us ready to vote on the 21st so we can fill these vacancies, you know, to make sure we don't have a problem.
So that would be a good idea. I believe there's more of an urgency for the planning committee because we have, okay, because we have, um, I don't know what the count of permits that are on the table that will have to be, that will have to wait. And then the question is, can we reappoint, um, Dan Kelly back since he's still a resident of the town?
Dan, Dan Kelly, and I've heard this before, and I, I don't know where this stuff gets brought up that becomes a problem. Dan Kelly is a sitting member of the planning board. Dan Kelly has changed his residence to, I believe, to live with his brother, uh, who is a Stoughton resident. That's where Dan's going to file his taxes. That's where Dan's going to vote from. That's his home. So Dan Kelly can sit on the planning board, you know, and it's.
That's not a true statement, Mr. McCrisky.
Then, we'll agree to disagree, Scott. I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm not debating it.
I'm going to tell you what the law is. The law is you have to change your voting to that residence. And he didn't.
I was told he was. He did, okay?
The last I heard, he was trying to take it into a commercial building and he was told that it couldn't be and it came up to the third floor, I mean, the second floor.
And I heard that as well, and it's an error. As of today, I believe that has been done. If it hasn't, he will, should be given the opportunity to do that. Because this is where I view it as when people question these things is almost, I wonder why? Do they not want somebody on a board and they say, "Well, this is the crutch. We can get rid of them."
No. When the gentleman buys a house in Bourne and he listed as his primary residence, what do you think that is?
How do you know, how do you know he lists his primary residence in Bourne?
Because it says it right on the deed.
Okay? He can have a house where he lives. Scott, this happens with people that get divorced, right? And they go and they live with a family member. It's happened here before.
Look at it how you want it.
Well, I'm looking at what's legal, Scott, and it's not against the law. If the guy owns a house on the Cape and he's not residing there, but he's residing in the town where his business is because that's what he wants to do right now, he has that right. All right? I've done my homework, too. He has that right. Once he's going to Bourne, and that's where his principal place of residence is, where he's going to file his taxes from, or he votes there.
Could I make a point of order?
I mean, I remember a guy who ran for Congress, okay, that didn't live in the district, Scott. All right? So, you know.
I hear a point of order.
Well, I think that maybe we're stopped this now, but I mean, I, I think that we're going beyond where we should be dealing right now.
I didn't start that volley, so. I didn't start that volley. I just wanted to clarify.
No, I, I, look, I'm not saying who started, who didn't start it. The, the point is that if there's an issue to be dealt with, we know that it needs to be dealt with and it can be dealt with. The, the, and I think that the idea of trying to move ahead with, uh, with getting applicants in and getting a quick resolution is important, but I do have a question about that. When did the advertisement go in that these vacancies are, uh, to be filled?
I'll defer to, uh, Deborah LeBlanc.
Um, I didn't put it in. My colleague did, so I'm.
When, when is it being published?
I'm pretty sure tomorrow. I don't, I don't know if it was in last week's as well, but it will definitely be in tomorrow. And you have a copy of it in your folder there. This, this is the ad right here.
Wait a minute.
This one.
So while we're looking at that information, we have three, uh, three members on the planning.
Let me, could I, could I, could I just continue? I mean, I'm trying to get an answer to when it was that, that the advertisement went in. If it only went in, if it's only going to be ad, advertised tomorrow, and the 15th is the closing date, that hardly gives anyone a chance to even apply.
Right.
And, and, you know, I'm not.
That's why I was picking the 21st.
Huh?
That's why I was picking the 21st. Because we would have them back in our hands by the 20, you know.
If the 20th, if it, if we have another week, is that, if that's what you're saying.
Well, I'm just doing the math, looking at the calendar. Deborah said it's coming out tomorrow. That's the eighth. The deadline's the 15th, which is the, um, the next Wednesday.
Yeah, but.
That would give us a couple of days to look at them. We could schedule the hearing for the 21st, which is a Tuesday, and we could appoint people Tuesday night.
We could do that. I guess the question is, are we giving people enough chance to even know about the openings available? I mean, here we go.
If, if we don't, we make another round.
There's somebody over there that I maybe knows an answer.
Yeah.
Yes, and then someone out there, Mr. Scardino, Vice Chair.
Yeah, our, um, uh, current policy, and this has been true for a little while, is that we really ultimately actually have a rolling, uh, uh, appointment schedule. If, if they miss this deadline, I think literally just, if there's any vacancies, they just send another one in.
Exactly.
And so we, we've been accepting vacancies whenever, anybody who wants to fill any application for any vacancies, we've been accepting them. Uh, this is just, uh, you know, this happens to be, um, you know.
We could appoint somebody tonight to a vacancy.
Time for us to, to put it out and advertise. But, um, you know, we, we can continue to advertise even after this, then I'm sure there's going to be vacancies.
Okay.
It's also on the town manager's web, webpage and on the board's webpage.
Okay. Excuse me, Chairman Scardino, can you please step forward? Um, we're interested in knowing, like, how many permits do you have in queue? What's going on?
In anticipation of, of the lack of a fourth member being applied, I had a conversation this afternoon with the acting town plan, Mr. Frank Horstfall. At that time, I asked him to notify the applicants. One is, one was already in the process to withdraw to the next meeting. Mr. Horstfall, I believe, is going to be on vacation the week of the 23rd, so I'm getting to the point, Mr. McCrisky's chronology should work, and that is one more holdover on two special permits would get us, uh, to the 30th, as far as our next meeting is concerned. At that point in time, we'd have the critical mass.
Well, that's great if we get two applicants.
Well, I only need another one right now.
You need one?
Well, to get, to hear a special permit, as Mr. Tisdale indicated, I need.
I realize that this microphone is not on. I need four members for a special permit. Um, the, the site plan approval requires three. Mr. Tisdale's point about putting the business at some jeopardy because there, if there was one opposition, the project couldn't pass, but the planning board's record in this regard for the boards, um, I can only remember one vote, uh, in the past three years that was a four to one vote. So, uh, the planning board usually works through the differences among members and reaches a consensus. But I will recognize that if I were an attorney for a applicant, I would certainly want the maximum number of possibilities for my client. So I'm just telling you what's the bare minimum, what's the best practice, and therefore, um, uh, as far as emergency appointments, um, I think we've dealt with our meeting this Thursday, the 9th, uh, with asking those applicants, and I haven't heard back, but I'm, expect to talk to Mr. Horstfall tomorrow morning, um, that we should be getting back from them. Because these applicants have been told that under, under state law, um, the only action that we could do if they insisted on having a hearing is to deny. We do not have the power to approve because the statute requires an approval of four. This is for a special permit. We have two right now. We also have a site plan approval for IKEA, which only requires three, but we wouldn't probably be voting on that. That hearing hasn't been opened yet.
So. You have three sitting members now, right?
Yes, sir. So just to give the boards, uh, some, some context of the actual emergency, if you want to put it that way, um, is that, uh, we have overcome the problem for this Thursday, um, to the best of my knowledge, and we would not, um, because the, our normal next meeting would be two weeks, we're probably going.
That's my question. What's the date of the next meeting?
And I'm kind of, well, I'm telling tales out of school here because we'd have to vote on that, but, miss, usually what happens when the planner can't make a meeting, we do move the meeting because we do not, we make the best efforts to have all the professional staff appear at our meetings because we find them crucial and helpful to our decision-making process. So, um, we will probably recommend that meeting be moved to the 30th, and it shouldn't be a problem with respect to that.
That gives us a two-week buffer.
That gives it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to explain that.
So we're in good standing?
So I'd go back, uh, I'd even put in the form of a motion.
Okay.
That, um, once that Ms. LeBlanc has reviewed the applications that are submitted as a deadline of June 20th, uh, June 15th, uh, that will be in, that we begin the process on the 16th to get those applications, uh, put on the agenda for the 21st of June so that we can take appropriate votes on all the committees.
Can I get a second? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tisdale.
I just noticed on this, this ad that it says one spot.
I'm sorry?
It says one for planning board on this, this ad.
Well, that would still, if we get one, that's all we need.
Right.
And again, we're going to have to, I think, you know, we're going to have to address it. There may be a couple others, who knows, but it, for that one. But then again, we're only advertising. We can appoint, you know, to the vacancies, we appoint. There's no restriction on when we can appoint the vacancy. So on that night, if we get two and we only advertise for one, there's still, it was an ample advertisement. It, one, if somebody was interested, they should have still submitted their application, and we could fill that vacancy that night as well.
So this would be for the vacancy spot?
Well, what I'm saying though is the applicant, the advertisement says one for the planning board. Well, we really need two. So if we get two, we can still appoint two.
Gotcha.
It doesn't mean that we can only appoint one because there's a vacancy there. We have the authority to appoint. So, you know, we could still fill that vacancy, maybe be, you know, the problem may be solved that night. But worst-case scenario, we put out another one or we go out and, uh, we say to this, like this meeting here, "If you're watching at home and you want to apply for a board of commission to be involved with the town, God bless you, is that to please come up here, fill out an application for boards, boards and commissions and speak with Ms. LeBlanc. She'll give you a copy of the vacancies and we'd love to have your application." We just got done talking about what do we do to get people involved? It starts here, you know, and, uh, I'll tell you right now, I will be putting out a Facebook post on a couple of the sites just to get the conversation going, so maybe people will say what they want to see in their government, so. Thank you.
Did we have a second for that motion?
No, not yet.
I totally heard the second.
Second, all in favor?
Could I ask a question?
Sure you can, Mr. Gito.
Through you to the chairman of the planning board. Do you have, how many people attend meetings at the present time?
Mr. Gito, using the definition that you said, attendance, um, we have three.
So there's you, Mr. Kelly, and who else?
Mr. Demuse, Mr. Paul Demuse.
Thank you. And so you have two, two vacant chairs at the present time?
We have one resignation and Mr. McCrisky has addressed one of them before when the discussion about.
Right. Okay. I, I just didn't know. So then your position also is up.
Yes, and I wanted to, that's why I raised my hand a few minutes ago, because if you advertise one and, uh, the one is me, then you haven't solved the problem. But Mr. McCrisky clarified his position.
So we have actually three positions to advertise for the planning board?
Yes. Um, the reapointment or, you know, the, we have three.
I'm in, I'm in sequence, so my.
Yes, I mean, your position is a position that, that has to be advertised.
Right.
So there are three. There's you and there's two vacant chairs.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table. We have a second. Can, ready for a vote if you are? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye as well. Thank you very much. And next is, um, the letter of support. That is Mr. Lori Janet Jones Roy Cohen. Uh, this is to use the Train Depot as a cultural center. And, um, there is a time restriction?
Yes.
Thank you. Be safe, Mr. Cohen. Yeah, we have time.
It's correspondence that was directed to the board, so we thought you should have.
Thank you very much.
I know it's a little late, but I want to thank you all for letting us, when presenting us with the opportunity to, um, say our piece and to hopefully be part of this historic venture that we're trying to manufacture right here. So I would like to turn this over to Dave.
Thank you very much, Jan. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the board, uh, for letting us come back. And, um, I think at the heart of this, it was a very tough decision, uh, seven years ago for a town meeting to decide on, on taking ownership of the property at the Railroad Depot because the state was letting it go to ruin. And there was a need to, to rush to save that building without really having the opportunity to develop programming ideas at the same time. Ideally, that would have happened. So instead, what we're doing is, is we're saying, now that the property is there and it's in need of, uh, major work on the exterior, uh, we have developed a programming idea to help you take the next step with it. So we're hoping that you'll look at this, uh, as an opportunity to move it forward. You have in front of you letters from the two members of the select board. Uh, it's kind of interesting, there's some continuity. I know Mr. Kevie was part of that group when they were coming in to develop that property, and they were able to get a lot done with, uh, taking ownership, actually doing the, the transaction itself. And, um, so there's some continuity there, but I thought that these two letters spoke volumes in terms of what we're trying to do. The letter speaks for itself and we're hoping that we can get consensus and, and support letter given to us through the little theater of Stoughton. And by the way, just so you know, this programming idea comes with it, somebody who's got decades of experience in filling up venues of all shapes and sizes. And not only that, but being able to engineer the shape of these buildings and size of these buildings to be able to operate as a theater, so that we've got mountains of experience in front of you to help take this idea further. So hopefully we can, uh, get that from you today. Thank you.
Okay. Then I think that just a few parting words, because I know we only have five minutes, so, um, I do want to say that we seem to be on the cutting edge of a global phenomenon, and that is, um, being involved in cultural centers. And it seems to me a perfect opportunity for us to join this movement and to make, and put Stoughton on the map for using its historic building. for using its historic building, and making use of it for the community and the surrounding communities. So, thank you again for your time, and thank you very much for your consideration. And hopefully, we can move forward with this.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCrisky, did you have a question or a comment?
Comment, yes, not to get into a long debate, but that going for us. I apologize. I said not to get into a long debate, but I wouldn't be looking to give anybody a letter to make a cultural center, but I know Janet and her ability. No disrespect to the two gentlemen, but Janet, you could sit there by yourself and win this, okay? I would have no problem, and I believe that, I would even put a motion, that, because things have to be, there's a couple things that still have to be done to that building before it'll be safe. There's still a gap in the floor. I did speak with Mr. Jafun, and there are not a lot. We can get that place up where you can utilize it, you know, in very short order. So, I would put a motion that the select board allow Little Theater to utilize the train station, and to work through the town manager's office, through scheduling the dates and so forth, and that the town manager speak with Mr. Jafun to make sure the building is safe enough for people to be able to use it. So, that would be my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
We gonna discuss it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, you want to discuss?
I just want to extend my thanks to these three people, because we tasked them with a task that came back and doesn't have a problem. And I'm glad that it's all moving forward. I don't think it's a problem to give them a letter. We gave a letter to the, I don't even know what we call it now, to save the theater downtown. That came, but this to me, just hearing about it, and what they're going to do to help get funds for their inside work and stuff like that, to bring it to life, and... With some of the activities, I think it's, and I know Mr. Lori has experience in this area, and I'm glad that they're all partnered up. But they took a task, and they brought it to us. Thanks, man. And I'm far at 100%.
Couple of questions.
Yes, Mr. Cavie, I just wanted to remind everyone, before I defer to Vice Chair Cavie, that our economic development director, Pam McCarthy, back in early May, we signed a letter that she could apply for a grant to get a consultant to come in and do a thorough investigation on the best use for that property. Now, that, anybody that knows anything about grants, it takes time. So, if she wrote the grant, then it takes time for her to get a response of acceptance and for the dollar amount for that consultant. So, all of these things need to work in combination. And I also believe this group, so Mr. Lori, and you started out working with Pam McCarthy in that same direction, and then somehow you splintered off. So, I'm sure these type of questions are gonna come up. Is this true or false, or you got a little...
Exactly. There was an RFP that was put out, I believe last November, if I had to guess. And I stopped by the office, I was able to pick up and take a look at what that was about. I stayed in communication with her during the open house they had at the Railroad Depot, when they were showing people around. I think that was through, I think, I know the Historical Society was there. And we had a conversation there, we talked about who was responding to the RFP. And we weren't in a position to take over, you know, doing all the pointing of the stone and the roofing, and, you know, which is, the scope of the RFP was pretty vast. And that wasn't what we're bringing. What we're bringing to the table is programming, not to take ownership of the property. So, we're almost like an anchor tenant, if you will, to operate from there, so that we could keep it actively running, and expand out from there to do the cultural center concept, you know. So, where those lines are drawn in terms of how all that would happen, it starts with the board. The board has to be committed to doing this, and then we can go into action of talking to the Historical Commission, talking to all the stakeholders in the town, the experts and the various members, to start to develop the idea and promoting the idea, doing the fundraising, if we're allowed to, talking to procurement. What are we allowed to donate in terms of, to the town, to make it happen? You know, all those things would kick into action once we got the commitment from the board.
From that, it doesn't sound like it's a conflict to apply, Pam McCarthy applied for a grant to get a consultant to look. It doesn't seem like it's a conflict at all. But I don't know until I dig a little deeper.
Yeah, Mr. McCrisky has some comments as well. I'll wait until he's done.
Okay. So, that's Mr. McCrisky?
Again, here we go. We're going down the rabbit hole. I think that we should just be supporting the use of it. I'm not, I'm not in favor of labeling it a cultural council, a cultural venue. It should be a community venue. It should be a place where Boy Scouts can go, Girl Scouts can go, hold their meetings, have their events. Historical Society could run things there, there's events we could run. So, to lock it down to one use, I don't think is what we should be doing. But again, 100% anchor, it's nice to have an anchor person in there to keep things in there, and keep it moving, keep it lively. That's great. But again, and that's something that I think we're going down, getting in too much of the weeds. I think that they're here tonight, they're asking to use the building. I don't think we need to issue a letter, we're issuing permission. That's all, we have the authority to do that. It's a town building. Everything else can be managed by the town manager, you know. And we, the vote is there, that the Board of Select, the Select Board recognizes Stoughton Little Theater, you know, to use the building when it's accessible, you know, if it's not being used for something else, not like it's going to be. But, you know, to make sure they just put the appointment in the book, they sign that they'll be using it on that date, so we know who's in there. That's all. Because again, we are at 9:52, and we haven't even taken up our eight o'clock appointments. 8:15, what is that? No, the public hearing, I'm sorry, 8:30. So, we're an hour and a half behind.
I would just like to add one comment, is that without a commitment, you know, where there's a vote taken, and we get a letter, it limits our ability to fundraise. If you don't need the fundraising, maybe it's too premature to do the fundraising.
That, Dave, with all due respect, I think that's what it is.
Just letting you know, at the point in time where you're ready, that's when we could kick into action.
I think there's a time, Dave, that we'll be looking for an RFP, for somebody to start a nonprofit, and run it as a community center, like the Historical Society runs the old library. That's a lease, we do it, we recognize that. They're the managers of it. But that would require, you know, a nonprofit starting up, a 501(c)(3), you know, and somebody that will come and bid to run that on behalf of the town. I'm all in favor of it. I just think this is just, you know, I want to see you using it now. We need to get some things done. But, you know, we did have an RFP. When I got on the board in 2019, we beat this to death of, you know, all the donut shop, the cafe, the brewery. Nothing is gone. Nobody's biting. You know, there was one opportunity for a brewery, they bailed out a long time ago. So, it's time for us now, and going, and I applaud you for coming forward, is that if we have a use, to go in there and get it active, let's start the ball rolling. You know, and I don't know, I don't think there's any legal things that says you can't donate to the town. We could set up a revolving fund, I believe, we can check with the auditor, and the money could go into the revolving fund to be used for that. So, there's things we can look at, but let's just get you folks with the rubber stamp that you need to move forward, and just get the ball rolling. So, that's what I'm, just don't want to keep going down the rabbit hole like we do. I'm done, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Dana, did you have something?
Well, I guess I have a lot of questions, and I'm not sure that this is the time to ask them. I think it's a great idea that we could use the building, except that we have other questions that go along with that, as to what about setting up the theater in the building? And can we go get funding to do that if we don't have the town's permission and okay to change it, not especially changing the architecture of it, but changing the space that we would want to use. And also, we thought that once, that it had been decided what was going to be done, that the town would also have the use of the building to rent out to conferences, or to people who wanted to have a beautiful wedding in a historic building, or a lot of things. There's a lot of things that would go along with that.
There's a lot more that has, in my opinion, a lot more that has to be done to get through that process. It's not something we're gonna do tonight. I'm looking to give you the permission of the board to be able to use it now. And we'll do what we've got to do. We can talk, you know, during that, as to what would be allowed, if we have to come back at a subsequent meeting. But there's certain things we can't do under that, because it's under the purview of the Mass Historical Commission, certain things we can't change. And it's in the deed with the MBTA. I mean, they put more restrictions on than they held themselves accountable to, but that's water under the bridge. But all I'm looking to do is give you the permission to go in there now. Whether we allow you to rent to somebody else, I don't know about that. That would be something that's bigger, that would be discussed through a different process. But again, I'm just looking to make the motion to give you permission to just start using it now. Fix it up, let's do what we have to do on our end, but then all you're gonna do is contact the town manager's office and say, we'd like to use it on the 21st. We're ready to run a little event on the 21st. Great. Somebody's there, you got your key, and we know you're using it, and good luck to you. And then we'll move on with the bigger picture as we move along.
Well, I thank you for your time and your attention to this, and hopefully, we can move on.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Yeah, sorry. I don't want to belabor this too much, but I do have a question just about the letter. It's very well-written, and it's very concise, and I think it's also very well organized. And the reason I mention that is that, you know, it's very clear what you're asking for, first sentence, really unmistakable. But it really seems also, there's something about it that just, I'm like, not quite sure the mechanics of it, right? So, the request is that the town's opponent, sorry, the letter that you're asking us to sign and say we support is, the town of Stoughton supports Little Theater of Stoughton in its efforts to restore the Railroad Depot to become the Stoughton Cultural Center and Theater. If you're doing the restorations of the depot, and it's becoming the Stoughton Cultural Center and Theater, does that imply that we're like, like giving you like a deed to the place, or are we giving it to you? Or, and if not, then how can you do the restorations on behalf of the town?
Well, I think Dave could best answer.
We know that a lot has to go through other processes and commissions and all of those things. Like I said, we're a programming opportunity for the town. To program it, we're also a 501(c)(3) through the Little Theater of Stoughton, to be able to go out and raise money. Without a commitment behind turning it into a theater, it makes it more difficult for us to go out and say, please make a donation, we want to put in seating, we want to put in staging, we want to put in all of the accoutrements that go to a theater. We need a commitment, otherwise, maybe it becomes something else through the consultants that are being discussed, that has nothing to do with what our concept is. And now, we're raising money and putting a lot of energy behind all of it, without it even going down to the conclusion that we're looking for. So, that wouldn't be fair. That's not fair to the nonprofit, the 501(c)(3).
Fair enough, but I mean, I'm trying to figure out what's being asked of us, not necessarily what other people need. And I just don't understand the mechanics of how we could support your restoring, doing restorations of the Train Depot for it to become a venue that would be your theater and cultural center.
Well, we're calling it the Little Theater of Stoughton, it's the town's cultural center and the facility is yours.
So, we're gonna make it a cultural center and theater?
We're a tenant of your property.
But, so, we still get back to the restorations. You guys will be doing the restorations?
We're offering ourselves as a commitment to you, that we will do whatever we're allowed to do, under all the parameters that are given to us to make it work. So...
Yeah. So, I support the idea, you know, generally speaking, you know, I had only two things I wanted to do with that Train Depot. One is secure it, we have. The other is activate it, I don't care how, right? I just want people to do, to use it. It belongs to the town, people should use it. And this is certainly as good, you know, as good as anything I've ever heard. In fact, this is very near dear to my heart, so I love the idea. But before I would sign off on a letter like this, I really would want to run it by a town council, just to make sure that, what the implications of it are, or if there's wording that has to be changed, to better, you know, get us kind of in line with what we can do and what we can't do. Like, I'm fine with all of that.
I would expect nothing less than that.
Yeah. So, yeah, so let's get it all right, and figure out what we got to do. In the meantime, I agree with Mr. McCrisky, you know, you guys can start using the building right away. We'll kind of work out this, and we'll make this, you know, this, two separate tracks. You guys can start doing things, and also, we'll figure out how to do this in a way that's, makes sense to everybody. I totally support that.
Mr. Carr.
I just want to say something quick. I heard that it was gonna go out as an RFP. I think Robin was here when she talked about it. I'm not a fan of that, because everybody wanted to turn it into a cafe, another barroom. And we're watching a Portuguese club within a stone's throw, that are on the verge of sadness, that they were asking for social memberships and stuff like that. I don't want our building to hurt anybody that's existing in the downtown trying to survive, by trying to slide something in there that, one, doesn't have the parking for it, and two, it's gonna defeat the purpose of somebody trying to hang on in the day and age that we have. So, I thought, when they brought this to us, it was like the greatest thing. I don't want to call it a community, I like the word "cultural" because "cultural" supports a lot more than just "community" in it. And that's all, that's all I got to say. But I wasn't a big fan of paying somebody to go out that, all they're gonna do is walk in and tell us, say, well, make a great barroom, and it make this, it could open for a cafe, could, 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 could. It's all conjecture. I just want something small in there that's gonna involve the schools. I talked to Dave one time about it, and he said the Boy Scouts could come in there, they could do stuff. So, it's incorporating all the concerns that Joe has. But we got to remember, it's only a small little venue, and we can't make, you know, this half shell, like, that's down in, let's give them the chance. And I understand Steve's concern was, if they put stuff in there, do we lose control? No, we never lose control, because you got it, it's ours. So...
Yeah. And that's one of the beauties of having their program, it doesn't compete with the restaurants that are around. But permissions, as Mr. McCrisky said, would allow you to rock and roll now. And then, it will also give us time to dig a little deep and find out all the legalities, and also what Pam McCarthy is, unfortunately, she's not here this evening. So, just to benefit it out.
If you'll allow me, you know, I think we should move forward with the vote, but I'll be happy to work with you guys to kind of facilitate getting all like the stuff worked out, so we can just, because you have all my support. Trust me, I'm 100% behind this.
Thank you very much.
But we'll just get the, just to make some sense for everybody, and then you guys can rock and roll.
Well, I mean, I can see just as a little aside now, as a little black box theater, and maybe seat close to 100 people. And it would certainly bring some business to the downtown area. Everybody likes to go out for...
Go for dinner.
...a drink or dinner before.
Drinks, go watch a show. I love it.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky? Just one last question. You still, you've got your own nonprofit status. Do you still have insurance?
Yes.
Liability, so we'd have to have in that as a letter indemnification for the town?
We do. We have already sent, because we use the temple now for rehearsal.
Okay, so, same thing. So, we just, you know, we'd need that. So, all right, thank you.
All right. Anything else in this?
Thank you very much.
That's it? Okay. All in favor, on the motion on the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next is a public hearing for DeMue, DeMy, I'm sorry, DeMy Ventures at 10 Wyman Street. The way this process will go is, we will, Vice Chair Cavie will read the hearing into our records, then... our records, then our, the owner will answer any of our questions to present, answer questions from the board, then we'll open it, questions up to the citizens, and then I'll come back to the select board members for more questions, and then we will take a vote. Mr. Kavy.
Thank you. Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing. Public hearing will be held by the select board on June 7th, 2022, to consider the application of Dulamage Ventures LC, doing business as the Savoy, for an all alcohol license and common vic shooters license at 10 Wyman Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. Hearing will be held at 8:30 p.m. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, via Google Meets and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the select board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to DL, sorry, D the blank at stoughton-ma.gov, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Select Board Chair, acting as the local licensing authority.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kavy. Ms. Alana Curry.
Alexandra.
I'm sorry?
Yes, Alana Alexander.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're the owner of the...
Yes, I am the owner of Dulamage Ventures, 10 Wyman Street. I'm here today to...
You speak a lot of English.
You have to turn the, press the little button and put it in.
And you may have to bring it a little closer.
Okay. So, I'll start over. Alana Alexander. I am here today seeking approval for the application of all in liquor license and common vic for 10 Wyman Street, which the intent for that location is a bar that would serve food as well. So, that's what that combination is for.
Was, is your maiden name Curry, or...?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I got it. Before you go on, Mr. Vice Chair Kavy, can you tell us a little bit about going through the town department responses?
They unanimously have no issues with this. Police is okay, fire okay, Board of Health okay, Building okay, Treasurer okay, and Water Department okay. What? So, the responses I'm seeing here on the documentation?
Well, it's some information on one of the pages that says the Water Department during the December 29, 2021 appointment, they were unable to change the water meter because it was locked in a concrete case or something like that, and...
Yes, so, from my understanding, with my last conversation with the landlord, and I guess his interactions with the town, is that was fixed. So, I guess where we have it now is that there is another appointment to be made for them to come out and look in the basement of that. So, that specifically, yeah, would be something that the owner would probably be in attendance for. What I do know right now is that he's on vacation. He probably won't be back until, I don't know, the end of the week. But other than that situation, all of the, I think, apartments to date have approved. What I'm trying to do there, I've worked very closely, probably close to a year with every individual department to kind of go step by step to stay within compliance and just to make sure that we all are on the same page.
There was another comment from the Board of Health. It was a follow-up inspection that was required. Dumpsters needed to be delivered and garbage and trash pickup behind the building.
So, that inspection happened today. The dumpster was delivered today, and then the, I think, the two remaining comments that the Board of Health had, has been satisfied. And I actually brought that with me today, as well as an email that was provided by instructor that was provided to, I believe, Lawrence Perry of the Board of Health, saying it's approved. So, to date, I think everything that I, there should be nothing outstanding with regard to my application.
Thank you.
Would you like to see that?
Yes. Can you pass the, what's... Can you pass that, those documents to our Deborah LeBlanc?
Yes.
And while you're doing that, I would ask our select board to, if they have any questions in this regard, yeah? Do you have any questions?
No, well, this is a copy, but those are originals that I just received today.
Yeah, I'll make that.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
My questions...
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes. My questions unfortunately are multiple. I'm looking at reports from April from the Board of Health. All right? We're in June. They're not up to date. I have the applicant telling me that they're all set, but I don't have the departments that are responsible responding recently.
So, if I could...
Well, no, if I, let me finish.
Okay.
This is an application. I've been here 19 years on this board, and I'm not happy with what I'm seeing here. From right when I looked at this the first time yesterday, doing my homework for the meeting, the floor plan that was submitted is almost cut in half. I don't know what the floor plan is there. I have no comprehension. It looks like it's showing two floors at one time. I can't see all the seating the way it's done. It runs off the page, all right? So, I can't, I will not vote for this tonight.
So, if I could just, okay.
We're the appointing authority. Please let me finish.
Yep.
All right? I'm looking at another one here from the Treasurer at the 28th. And when you get right down to the whole thing, we've dealt with this in the past, is what comes first? The application for somebody to run a bar and restaurant, and will the board issue a license? Or do we build out for it and basically run it through the process and get to the point where this board has to say yes or no? If we say no, an applicant is out a lot of money. So, what comes first? You know, the okay to get a liquor license? When I recall the conversations, some people were here during that time. I know that we applied for liquor licenses to attract a restaurant with an alcohol as a second use for downtown, was one of the conversations I heard. So, again, I just, I would like to have this application resubmitted on all of our departments, so it's current to today. We're making the decision today. I shouldn't have to look at a document from April 21st, April 28th, 12/20/21. I mean, this is ridiculous. I want up-to-date documents. If I'm going to vote on a license, I want up-to-date documents. I want the floor plan so I can read it and I can ask questions. I can't do that tonight. I mean, ma'am, please, I can understand. Please, don't interrupt us. You know, this is, you know, I understand, you've got a lot of money invested here, and I understand that, but I need information that's current from the department heads that work for our town so that I can make an informed decision. I can't right now. You're giving me information, and I want that from my department heads.
Right. I just actually wanted to confirm that the agenda application that I saw was pretty much up to date.
Well, that's not what I'm looking at here.
Yeah. I was sent that via email, so I don't know where the...
Yeah, okay. I'm just looking at, I'm looking at another one. I'm looking at another document from November of 2021. All right? So, if that's a document that is submitted by a department head, fine, that should be attached. See, you know, this document attached to my memo.
So, I, do you know what document is that?
Ma'am, all I'm saying is, I don't have information to make an informed decision tonight, so I'm not voting for this license tonight. That's just me personally. I can't speak for anyone else.
And Ms. Alexander, that was one of the, there's some confusion going on because I was calling you Ms. Curry because information that I had, had your last name as Curry. And it wasn't until you told me that, oh, your married name is Alexander, but your maiden name was Curry. So, you know, this application is, I don't believe it's, someone should have directed you a little bit better. I think that's what the issue is.
Yeah, I was wondering if, because the packet that I was received in terms of the agenda, so the agenda has a portion for me, and in that particular portion, it has the business registered, which has the correct information. It has all of the department heads' emails and approvals all the way up until probably a couple of weeks ago. So, the only legacy information that should be shown is probably the plans. And I went through plan approval for that. So, those plans were received in large legible copies that I provided.
I saw those too, but they're all dates.
To each member, so there should be nothing cut off. It should be a large presentation.
Just one second, Ms. Alexander. There is a side conversation going on, and it's not your fault, but we got updated information from Ms. LeBlanc. What's, what do you think is going on here?
We have all the department head responses that, you know, I see some the end of April, and this is just as they came in. And this application has been, you know, being processed for quite a while now, so it was, you know, as soon as one department got it, they would send it in. I mean, there, as far as I can tell, they were current. I thought they would be acceptable.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, but we had the petitioner telling us that she spoke to somebody recently.
Yeah, today, as of today.
I want that from that department head.
It's already in a package, sir. I, the information that was provided...
I don't see it. I don't see it in the information I have, ma'am.
I have it.
Yeah, this is the first time we're seeing this information. Ms. LeBlanc, did you receive any information today? This was from, I guess, Mr. Perry?
From Mr. Perry?
Yeah, the one that you just made copies of.
No, I didn't. But what I have is dated April 21st, and he said that they passed a preliminary Board of Health inspection today. They have a few minor issues to address before they can open to the public, having a conforming dumpster delivered, previous garbage issues behind the building addressed by the owner. I have no objections to her going forward with applications to the Board of Select, the Select Board at this time for alcohol and common vic. We will do one more follow-up Board of Health inspection just prior to her opening to the public before we issue her Board of Health, have the permit to operate.
And then, would you have that today, which was provided today for opening? So, all of these statements for all of the departments should be recent, within the last probably two to three weeks? Because I just received the building certificate of occupancy probably maybe three weeks ago, and then after the building signed off on that, that's when all of the other departments signed off. So, all of those approvals should be within the span of probably a week and a half. And that was what I viewed based on the attachment that was provided to me prior to this meeting. So, I don't know, because there's a discrepancy in what you see and what was provided to me, what does that do in terms of this conversation? Like pushes out weeks, just...
Yeah, this, we have two different directions we can go. So, I see the email that you have, it's dated today, Tuesday, June 7th, at 12:38 p.m. That information should have made its way to us because everyone knows that today is your public hearing.
Yeah.
But we did not receive it. So, we can, I've heard from one select board member that they would not vote in favor of this tonight, but do I have some commentary from other board members? I would be willing to accept this application and approve it, subject to receiving the information directly from our department heads. So, that is about the dumpster. That is about the meter, because I think those are the only two things that were outstanding.
Okay.
But I will defer to my fellow board members. Mr. Kavy?
Yeah, any concerns that we may have, I agree generally, we could just have a contingent upon, a license issued upon, you know, providing certain things. Now, I'm not an attorney, I'm not going to pretend to be one, but I am kind of curious to know. It looks like the application is for Dulamage Ventures, doing business as the Savoy.
So, the application that I provided was for Dulamage Ventures. So, when I originally submitted for the license, it was obviously through the website with my, all of my business entity information. So, that was the first step. So, that's obviously been sitting for a while. Then, the process from there began with the site plan approval, because not only was I looking to serve spirits, I have some seating for some food on the side.
My concern, I mean, particularly my concern is that the place is not actually named the Savoy, right? It's named Toffee Social?
That was, I don't, that is, a discrepancy was not on my business license, and I...
I'm just worried that this application might be for an entity that doesn't exist, and I just don't want to issue a license that doesn't make any sense.
So, what, it's S-A-V-O-I. That was originally thought the entity of it, but maintaining the Dulamage Ventures is what I've done consistently, and that is what is registered.
Yeah, but like the doing business part, I think is like critical to identifying this legal entity. Now, I could be wrong. I'm not going to pretend to know the law on this. But it does make me a little nervous to do this if the application, if like the entity listed here is incorrect.
I had a question about that, too. I did bring it up because it, that goes to the length of time that this process has been going through. And it was something that I did bring up to Deb. I'm sorry, I can't even realize.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Ms. LeBlanc. And then, the advice was just really not to go and change anything until I was here, so then, I could probably look through the application updated. But if you look at the timestamp, I think I submitted that application, was it in March? And then, from there, it's just been a long process. It's been getting approval for the Select Board because I would be required to take up some parking spaces. So, that was done here. It was approved, and then from there, I worked with building, I worked with the Board of Health to get the building done, my electrical, my plumbing permits closed out. There's a paper that should be in that package of all departments sign off, the plumbing and every, all of that happened in, I believe, like mid-May, mid-May. All of those were signed off, police was signed, all of that was signed off. And then, once that was signed off, I was told, then this would be the next step. But in between all of that, I was also told that despite applying for the liquor license, I would need to continue the process because everything needed to be checked off before I was here. So, when I applied for Dulamage, there's a point in between it where I was thinking about names.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's what, so that's what that is. But from the time that the building department, all the permits were pulled, the name was chosen, and that name is representative on the certificate of occupancy that I received, as well as the sign off on the, all the permits that were submitted. And then, I believe the paper that was given to me by building, that I specifically had to get the signature for the plumber, for the electrical, for the fire chief, and then need to come back for the approval for the Board of Health, which you see I received a preliminary. And today, the copies that were provided to you was the final, saying that the dumpster's there, everything is fine. She's, I approved her to open. I realized that that was done today. That was the reason for me to print out the email, just in case you were asking to go along with what the approval that was provided to me from the Board of Health inspector. So, I mean, at this particular point, I'm unclear of what it is on my end that you would need me to do, or is it that the application as presented to you is missing information, so internally, it would need to be collected?
I think we have a couple of different issues here, and when you were working through all this, did you have an attorney working with you?
In terms of figuring out the name?
Well, yeah, did you hire an attorney to, no, to help you fill out these forms and to get all these things completed?
No, what I did was I worked with the departments themselves.
Okay, which is fine. It's fine, I just wanted to know. But there could be some gaps here that we got to, we've got to fill up now.
Okay.
And I could be wrong. I really, I want to see you succeed. I want you to get in there. I'm going to swing by, I'll check out the food, I'm going to have some drinks. I definitely want to see you succeed, but I don't think we're there yet. I think we're going to have to run this through at least town council to review it, to make sure that there aren't any issues. And then, we also have some open items. I would make a motion to continue the public hearing until our next meeting at 7:00 p.m. I don't want to cut you off. I'm sorry, I know you had things to say.
Okay, before, Mr. Carr, I just had something on the table, too, Ms. Alexander. It started out that the application said it's a restaurant, but you said it's a bar, so I was unclear. What is the purpose of your business?
So, the business is a bar, and it's offering some food. And because of that particular... And because of that particular, um, because, the reason, because I'm offering food, I've had, that's why, that is why the purpose of the planning board, because I would be taking a parking. And I'm in that gray area of just a bar slash restaurant. So, the occupancy is 36. And then, so the main driver for me is the spirit part of it. But yes, in addition to that, I was, had conversations internally that they would like to see some food offerings with that. So, that was the agreement that we definitely came to. And I'm not opposed, I wasn't opposed to doing that. So, this is where it's led me. And because I'm in that area, I've had to go through a couple of different other processes, just as opposed to someone not offering any type of food, or pretzels, or anything like that. So, that is why I had to go to get a couple of more departmental approvals.
Just for us to issue this license, we have to make sure that we're, you know, following the law, just like everyone else. And so, this is something we're gonna have to escalate, to get a second pair of eyes on this, to make sure that, you know, that if there's any gaps, that they're filled. So, I do, one, I would just ask that our town manager, Mark Tisdale, if you don't mind sort of facilitating this and running this past, or you can delegate it to whoever, who might be able to take care of, of helping Ms. Alexander. And then the motion is to continue the public hearing until our next meeting, as the first order does.
Mr. Cavey, Vice Chair Cavey, before you do make your motion, Mr. Carrara has a question that he wants to-
You don't might have a question, too.
Got it.
My comment will go to Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
You're an LLC?
Excuse me?
You're an LLC, right?
I am.
Well, you filled out your workman's comp information wrong. If you're an LLC, you're not a sole proprietor. You can waive your right to supplying yourself workman's comp, which is the spot that you should have filled out. But you're not a sole proprietor, 'cause you turn in stuff to the state clerk's office, and they review it.
Okay, so I can, I can go back to the lawyer that I was speaking to.
Yeah, you'll have to straighten, I'm just trying to help you straighten that up.
No, that's fine. I actually went through this process with several of the towns, and I, that is why I felt like I was doing it slowly and having close communications, because I've, I pretty much-
Oh, it's an easy thing to fill out.
Yeah, that's an easy fix, a fix to do. But in addition to that, so this would need to be continued, what is the next continued date?
Wait just a minute, before we get, go to that step, Mr. McCrisky and Mr. Gito also have questions. Want to go to Mr. Gito first?
I'll yield to Mr. Gito, and if you could just get me after that, thank you. I wanna get back to the, the point that Mr. Carrara made at the beginning, from the water shut off in the water meter issue. Has that been resolved, or is that?
My last conversation with the landlord is that it has been resolved. So, at this particular point-
With whom?
With, with, he's fixed that. So, from what I-
He who?
Miss, the landlord of the property, the owner of the property.
Has the, has the water department checked that out?
I don't think the water department has been back.
Okay, well, you might wanna make sure that that happens.
Yes, I would not be present for that, but I will check that.
The second thing is more of a question. I, I thought I heard you say that, that you were interested in opening a bar when you started.
That is the, that is the intent then, and that is the current intent now.
And then someone said to you that you needed to serve food as well?
No, what I said was that the conversation led to me serving food in terms of, it would be nice, and it would be encouraging to offer food along with the spirits, rather than just spirits.
Was that conversation between you and whomever on, on the private side of the issue, or was it the town that said that you had?
It was both. It was both. Both the town and then some individuals that I've, I've been going through a mentor process by that, yeah.
I didn't know that the town could, could-
Couldn't make offerings?
Could have you required to make food. You didn't, you were not required to.
No, it wasn't a requirement. It was something that I conceded to do with the conversation.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that. It wasn't, it wasn't-
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that was something I decided to do after the conversation.
Anything else, Mr. Gito? Mr. McCrisky?
Through you, too, the town manager. I'm not sure, Mark, do we know, is this a restaurant license? What is the name of this license we're issuing? We have club licenses, we have, you know, is this, I don't think we had a bar license. So, what is the license we're approving, or we're asked to approve?
Well, I'm looking at the planning board approval, and I went to the planning board for a bar slash lounge.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
With that, you mentioned that you were gonna serve food because, and you needed parking, you were gonna utilize some parking. Were you issued parking spaces?
I was not issued parking spaces. The conversation during the select, the planning board meeting was that based on my occupancy, I would be looking to occupy between five and seven spots. So, the, the time that I would be open would be from like four to 10. And at that particular time, the surrounding businesses, there's really no competition for parking.
Okay, so you're aware that you're not entitled to any parking spaces? It's whoever uses them, that's it, right?
Yes, it's, it's all public street parking.
There was a shop there prior to you deciding to renovate, that had a sign up that said parking for so-and-so only.
No.
So, but I really have, and I'd like an answer, 'cause I really have a problem that this board gets an application for a liquor license that we knew nothing about, and somebody was allowed to go through the process. I mean, this goes back, Lou, we've had the conversation years ago, what comes first? The special permit, or the license to do what, you know, the applicant wants? So, this is sort of like putting this board in a very difficult position, you know, and you almost have to vote for license, even if the board chose to not issue a license for this type of an operation. All right, so, I mean, and this isn't something that, you know, we have people that have been around here a little while, and should have alerted this board of this type of an operation coming forward, so that we could have said months ago, yes, we'll give you a license. Or if we weren't gonna give a license for a reason, and then, you know, the applicant is allowed, you know, their, their appeal process, and, you know, whatever it be. I just have a real problem with the process here, you know? And, and the way that this application's been submitted, we shouldn't have to hear from the proponent, from the applicant, that she thinks the landlord took care of it. It should be in black and white to us from our department heads. So, that's why I just wanted to come back, get reworked, look at the application, make sure that everything is there. I see things here that are blacked out with a confidential stamp over it. It's an application before this board, there's nothing confidential. I don't want-
I'm sorry, it's state of earth and, you know, things like that.
Well, see, that, that should be in here, some kind of a note. I've never seen that before.
Well, I did that, so I could-
Okay.
You know.
But, but again, when I'm voting, Deborah, you do a great job, and I'm not questioning you, but when I'm voting on a license, and I see something that's blacked out saying confidential, I shouldn't have to have that. I should know what that was, and that's very logical. But again, I didn't know that, because, you know, but I'm here wondering what it is on an application I have to vote on, so, okay, I'm ready to vote.
So, the motion on the ta, uh, the motion on the table was to table this?
No, continue the hearing.
Oh, continue the hearing?
Yeah, to our, to our next, let's see, next scheduled? Scheduled meeting, maybe third order business is our next scheduled meeting?
Or, yes, next scheduled meeting after the information is provided.
Oh, I like that a lot better. That makes a lot more sense.
This way here, you know, if it's not ready, we don't have to put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, so, my motion is to continue the public hearing until we've received all of the information, and there's been a review by our town council to verify that the application is valid.
Okay, great.
So, if I could ask when the next-
Is there a second on that?
She has a question.
Oh.
What was that?
Is there, so if this is a contingency based on the completed application, what is the timeline for getting that information to you? 'Cause it can be this week.
Well, if it's this week, it'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, so I would just-
Once we have the opportunity to review it and see a complete application, you know, with everything the way it's supposed to be, you know, we'll put it on the next agenda. That's what the vote is. As soon as the information's ready, it'll be on the next agenda.
Also, is there, if I could ask-
It'll be cleaner that way.
Yeah, is there a way that I could ask to get a copy of what it is that you see?
It's your application. You're gonna, you're gonna have a part in that.
No, I'm saying, based on what I've, what I reviewed prior to this meeting, based on what you're saying, I didn't see any gaps. I'm wondering if there was a discrepancy in what you see based on what I have, what I was-
Yeah, well, again, I don't know what you have, because I don't have it here. You made comments that I don't see here, so-
But that's why I'm asking. I just wanna see what you see, that's all.
Ms. Alexander, I think you can get a copy of this package that we're looking at from Ms. LeBlanc.
Who does the final?
She has the back.
You have the-
Okay.
You did, and that's what I'm saying, so that agenda looked like they had information that was being-
Oh, we have information.
Was being presented as not accurate, like the plans. You should have a full, okay.
And again, the plans, exactly. I mean, you know, and it's gotta give me, I have to be able to look and see what the floor plan is, where people are gonna be sitting, how close they are. I know the building inspector looks at it, but that's our right to do that as well.
Okay, and if I may have a copy, I can leave here today.
Yeah, I don't know how accurate it is, but if the building inspector signed off on it, I can talk with him. But I only see three quarters of it. It's cut in half, what I saw.
Yeah, it should have, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very mu, oh, did we take a vote?
We didn't vote.
We gotta vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, as well. The next, can you share, Ms. LeBlanc, how many liquor licenses do we have available? Because of the expansion of our territory, we received, or population, I'm population growth, not the territory.
No, they were, they were a special request to the legislature, and they were granted by a previous board.
Six? Okay.
And I was informed that-
Two left?
Mm-hmm.
You just recently got approved because of the population increase, restaurant alcohol licenses in the whole town of Stoughton. Not liquor stores or package stores or anything, just for restaurant alcohol, all alcohol licenses.
Do we have any other restaurant, restaurants in queue that are gonna vie for those two, or will, as of now, we will still? Yeah, it's not like a Cheesecake Factory wants to move here and-
Not that I'm aware of. There is another company that's looking to do like functions, that's also a kind of a long-time application that had to go through, you know, the zoning or planning board. It's in a-
That's not a restaurant.
Strip mall, and they, you know, wasn't really built for parking, so that's kind of in process. It hasn't come up to this office yet, but I have, you know, I know it's in the works. And I think they applied for beer and wine, because there was no extra licenses at the time, so I don't know if they'll change that once they get closer, but we have six available now.
Okay, so, you'll, seems to be, nothing is gonna take those licenses before you get back to us?
Well, I did have that conversation that you guys are having now, in terms of my due diligence for going forward. And then I had it recently, so I was kind of, I didn't feel, I didn't have that threat, at least the conversation that I had, that they were not available in that particular downtown area.
Okay.
So, okay.
So, what, we've already voted-
Okay.
And we'll see you next time. And our takeaways is, our town manager, Tisdale, is going to follow up on, on this application, and then it'll make its way to Ms. LeBlanc. It'll be presented to us, and it should be clean and neat. And our next meeting, if, if we have everything, then you'll be on the agenda again. What is that, June 26th? No.
21st.
June 21st. So, if all works as it should. Thank you very much.
And is, should I contact you for, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And moving right, move into the next application, and that is Juanita Steak House at 577 Washington Street. As you're moving forward, I would like to ask Vice Chair Cavey to read it into the records. And once again, our process will be, Vice Chair Cavey will read it into the records and read about the operations, and then the owner will present, then we'll have questions for the board, and the owner will answer those questions, and then there will be more questions from the Select Board, and then we'll take a vote. Thank you.
Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on June 7th, 2022, to consider the application. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. I'm sorry. No, it's a guy, get there quickly. I apologize. A public hearing will be held, sorry, so, Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on June 7th, 2022, to consider the application of Juanita Restaurant, Inc., doing business as Juanita Steak House, to transfer an all-alcohol license and approve a common vicu license at 577 Washington Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. Hearing to be held at 8:40. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google Meets, and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to dleblanc@stoughton-ma.gov, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority. Our town departments, it looks like you have received okays from all of them, but there was some comment by-
A motion to open the hearing, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
And I vote aye as well.
I didn't mean to be rude.
So, the, the only comments I, that I was able to spot were coming from the Health Department. They recommend any approval issued not be for more than 80 seats total. See, the current Board of Health permit for this location has two associated variances for both the dumpster and the exterior grease tank slash traps, and therefore, they're limited under Board of Health permit to 80 seats maximum, should they install larger conforming exterior grease tank in future, and also, and also make their dumpster compliant to local Board of Health regulations. The Board of Health could then consider an expansion to 80-seat limit at this time. In addition, the Board of Health is still waiting for the submittal of a signed contract for the exterior grease tank, that 1,000 gallons, automatic pump out for every three months, four times a year, for the, for a Board of Health licensed pumper, sorry, from a Board of Health licensed pumper, before we can issue their annual Board of Health food establishment license. So, those are all the comments we've received. It seems like, otherwise, there are no concerns, but, but the seating being limited, or some additional grease traps, dumpster, different dumpster. But there's also, they're waiting on two things, a signed contract for the exterior grease traps, and also the automatic pump out for every three months.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name's David McCarter. I'm an attorney in Stoughton. I'm here tonight representing Juanita Restaurant, Inc., on the application for the transfer of a all-alcohol common vicu license for a location at 577 Washington Street in Stoughton. We were here, if you recall, in December, and at that time, you graciously granted the approval of the transfer of the license that time. When the application was reviewed by the investigator for the ABCC, they came up with an issue relative to the pledge that we had agreed to with the transfer. Well, and I don't wanna get into the legal technicalities of it tonight, unless you really want to, I will, but in any event, I worked, the transferor's attorney worked with the investigator for the ABCC to presumably resolve that issue, because I did have the investigator review what we were submitted to you tonight, and it should meet approval this time around. But basically, that was the issue. Everything you had approved the transfer, we went through what the proposed use was. It's gonna be Brazilian-style steak- Everything you had approved the transfer, we went through what the proposed use was. It's gonna be Brazilian-style steakhouse. I'm here with Juanita Almeida. The manager is in Florida tonight. She had a family emergency, but I believe she's on Google meets, Rosalie Boyle, and John America, who's a longtime resident of Stoughton, businessman in Stoughton, who's also a director of the corporation. So basically, unfortunately, I tried to, with the investigator for the ABCC, I tried to see if maybe we could just resolve it at that level and change the paperwork. But I guess the way it works, and I find out, I've been in this business a long time, in the legal business, but you learn something new every day. But once they say no, then you gotta do a whole new application all over again. So we did a whole new application all over again. It's already been looked at, so it should be okay this time around. Nothing's changed. Still the same proposal, still the same people, the same manager. And I believe Mr. America told me that he submitted the documentation on the grease trap from the contract to the town. So I'm a little surprised. I didn't see it, but I believe he did do that. If not, we certainly will. So the Board of Health can sign off at the appropriate time. We'll give them the appropriate documentation. And we understand that we're limited to 80 seats based upon the variances in the past for the grease trap or whatever. And maybe someday the size will be increased, but that's not in the plans at the present time. But this location has been a restaurant for a long time, various incarnations over a long period of years. It's been sitting vacant for a long period of time, and we hope to rectify that situation and put a nice Brazilian-style steakhouse in that location. Ms. Almeida has been in Stoughton for quite some time. She was in the restaurant business. She had a little restaurant on Canton Street that she ran and operated for quite some time. She was a cook at one of the Portuguese clubs before that. Ms. Boyle has some experience. She's tips trained. She'll be the manager. She's worked in serving liquor in the past at locations in Florida. So we're optimistic tonight that you will look favorably upon this application as you did in December, and that we will pass muster this time around on the technical issue regarding the pledge with the investigator for the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and there'll be a nice restaurant in Stoughton pretty soon. So if you have any questions, here we are.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to our select board for questioning, and then go to our citizens to see if they have questions. Mr. Gito.
What was the issue with the ABCC?
The issue was the pledge. They interpreted as the pledge secured the lease as opposed to a loan or a debt. So we restructured it so that it secures a debt, the promissory note, on the inventory and the fixtures. And that seemed to satisfy them. But, so we did that this time around, and we didn't have that the first time around. I disagreed with them. Transferors Council disagreed with them, but they make the final decision, so we reworked it.
Mr. McCrisky.
First, Madam Chair, if you just, give me one moment of indulgence. I just wanted to offer my condolences to Attorney's Mom, who passed away. We know-
Thank you, thank you very much.
This was Phyllis McCarter, who was married to Dale McCarter, retired Stoughton police officer, mother of David. Great family, and I was traveling, I heard that, and haven't had the chance to talk to you, but a great family, and my condolences to you and your family.
Thank you.
So the pledge is all set, right? That's it?
I hope so.
Okay, great. All right, that was my only question. Thank you.
Any other board members with questions? If not, citizens, questions, please? Oh, Ms. Walsh, please step forward and state your name and precinct. If you need a separate microphone for social distancing, we can arrange that as well.
No, I'm, I have so many health issues. COVID is way back in the alphabet. Thank you. Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. It appears that Ms. Almeida has been so successful that she's able to move on up and get something bigger and better. And as a fellow woman, I'm very pleased to see that and to support that move. I believe Mr. America's sister Sedalia and Odilia are former students. So, and I know that family has been in the restaurant business dear me. I think that I would support this as long as everything's been cleared up. But as a comment to the board, when you have three liquor licenses hearings scheduled in one evening, this might have been a very good time to have town council present with you at the table, which I thought was one of the ideas that made the new firm more acceptable to the board. So that when there are questions about things like pledges or Board of Health, that it can be answered immediately, and folks don't have to keep returning. As they said, they've been here, they were here six months ago, they're back. So I support the petition, and I hope that you do too. I've said on previous occasions, I definitely am a carnivore.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Is there a motion to accept this license?
There still is that, the open issue with the Health Department, or Board of Health.
You put in the- You put in the patent. Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve both the alcohol, all alcohol license and the common vicular license, all alcohol transfer, and the new common vicular license issuance pending approval by the Board of Health.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, discussion? No further discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
One, you do need to approve the pledge as well. That's a requirement from the ABCC. You have to approve the pledge, and then it goes to them, so.
Okay. Is the wording for that pledge in the application? I hope?
I didn't say you have to approve. I would ask you to approve the pledge.
No, no, I'll have to do it. I just want to know how to say it.
Well, I, you know, if it's not needed, it's not needed, but if it is needed, I'd hate to have them come back to vote the pledge again. So I would make a motion to vote the pledge of the license separately. And I would say the pledge was subject, Dave, to what is in lieu of a securement of what?
I don't think, well, I don't think you have to do anything.
Okay, well, listen, I'm looking for some guidance here, okay?
Basically, just, we're asking for approval of the application, the transfer of the liquor license, and also for the pledge, which is a separate request on the application.
Okay, so, Mr. Cavey, would you accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion for approval?
I think-
Recognize the pledge as well?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Can I get a second?
I seconded it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye as well. Congratulations. Thank you.
Good luck. About time.
Thank you very much.
Can't wait to see it open, guys.
Right. Bye-bye. I'll close the public, motion to close the public hearing, please?
So made.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. There's a- There's another application, Backstreet Grill and Tavern. Mr. Cavey, can you please read that notice of hearing into the records?
Sure. Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing. A public hearing will be held by the select board on June 7th, 2022, to consider the application of Backstreet Grill and Tavern for the transfer of an all alcohol license and common vicular license at 531 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. Hearing to be held at 8:50 PM. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google meets, and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the select board office at 781-341-3100, extension 9212, or emailing dleblanc@stoughton-ma.gov. Per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Select Board Chair, acting as the local licensing authority. Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye as well. So the process will be to, Mr. Cavey will give us description of the operations and the findings from the departments, and then we will hear from the applicant. The select board members will ask questions, followed by citizens asking questions, and then we'll take a vote. Can we have a motion to? Mr. Cavey is gonna tell us a little bit about the operations and the department findings.
Sure. So the police have no objections. I apologize. Where it is in all one place is, I can't seem to find that. But Fire Department has no objections. Comment from the Board of Health, we received the pumping contract today, and the Board of Health has no issues with the change of owner at this time. So they have no issues, no objections from the building and zoning. No objections from treasurer. Water and sewer, also no objections. So no department had any objection to this transfer license.
Thank you. Please state your name and what your relationship is to this organization, this organization, Backstreet Grill and Tavern, please.
Sir, would you mind turning on the mic and bringing it a little closer to yourself? There's, the microphone in front of you has a button. There you go. You might need to bring it closer to you as well, so we can hear you better.
So I'll repeat what I said.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
My name is Dennisiah Brown, and I'm counsel for the petitioners, Backstreet Grill, the KNG Brothers LLC. And there's probably not much to say. I believe everything is in order based upon the remarks that you've made and based upon my review of the materials. So I just want to say a little bit, not much. The applicants are two brothers. They've got substantial experience running restaurants. They were proprietor of a restaurant in Natick, Massachusetts, for probably a good 40 years. Their father was proprietor of that restaurant also. So this is in their blood, and this is what they do, and they do it well. And if the applicant, application is approved, we would invite all of you to see for yourself what kind of establishment they run, and I think you'd be pleased. I can also say from personal experience, my two children worked there many, many years ago in the restaurant, and so I know full well personally. I can vouch for the operation, and I think you will find that it'll be a pleasant addition to this community.
Thank you very much. I would like a motion to open the public hearing, please, if we did not do that?
We did.
We did.
We did. Okay. Can we get a motion again, just for the records, just in case?
Motion to open the public hearing, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So with that said, do my fellow board members have questions for the application to transfer all alcohol and common vic licenses to Backstreet Grill and Tavern located at 531 Pearl Street?
All right, I'll make that motion, so we can start a discussion.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
Was the motion to approve the license?
Yeah, just for discussion, so we can have a discussion.
I'm perfectly fine with it. There's been no public input, though, but I'm fine with that motion.
All right, I thought it was, all right, well, no, I'll take the motion back. I thought it was something different. Okay. We opened up the public hearing, so, all right. When you get, I got a question when you get to me.
I'm getting kind of tired, so I'm like, I apologize.
I got up at four this morning.
I know, I can't seem to remember anything right now, but-
So the process, the stage we're at for this process is the select board is asking questions. That question period will then open to the citizens to make comments and responses. Then it'll go back to the select board if they have any other questions, followed by a motion, a final motion, to accept or reject.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Does anyone have any questions about the transfer? Mr. McCrisky, yes?
I just want to hear a little bit about the, for the new owners, what they're gonna be doing there. For those of us who, that go to Backseat Grill, you know, you're gonna keep us coming in?
Oh, definitely, yeah. We're excited to get started. We're not gonna change anything right away. We want to invest into the community, maybe a little, you know, just add to the building and more menu items and stuff like that, so we're excited.
Great, good luck.
My brother Costas, we've been working together for many, many years, so.
Brothers, working together?
Yeah.
You still talk. You're doing something right.
He's twelve years younger, so he's like, almost like my half son.
Yeah, 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 but still, you still talk. That's a good thing.
Oh, yeah, we get along very well.
Great, good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
I'll just make a similar comment. I wish you nothing but luck here. You know, it's a place my family goes often, and so it's been a little bit of change here and there. We'll continue to come by, and I'm sure we'll enjoy the place. And best of luck. I know this is a difficult industry. It's a difficult, you know, time of, it's a difficult environment in a lot of ways. Coming out of the pandemic, perhaps a little bit better, but you have, you know, my support. I hope this works out for you guys. But I've got other comments or questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavey. How about you? Okay, do we have citizens' comments? Ms. Walsh, please step forward. State your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you. Cynthia Walsh, precinct three. Obviously, this restaurant is at the opposite end of Stoughton from where I live. But one thing that the two past owners have done before the pandemic, took all the fun away, is they had an annual St. Patrick's Day luncheon and invited the Stoughton seniors, and we did pay a fee, but I'm sure that it wasn't a full cost of the meal. And the previous owners were not Irish, in fact, but they put together just a little luncheon with some corned beef and cabbage for, I'd say, about 40 or 50 seniors. It's something you'd have to coordinate with our Council on Aging, if that's something you'd be willing to do next year, for instance. And I do know for a fact that some of the seniors that are more mobile than I did return to the restaurant at other times to enjoy the food and pay the full fare. So it's a good promo for your business, and seniors do like to go out.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh.
So our previous restaurant was Italian, and we had corned beef and cabbage quite often, so shouldn't be a problem.
That's great. Without any further questions, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Is there a motion to accept the common vic?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Good luck.
And good luck.
The fastest thing we've done tonight. My hair is getting grayer by the moment.
Save the best for last.
Okay, the motion was to transfer all alcohol and common vic licenses for Backstreet Grill and Tavern located at 531 Pearl Street. That was the motion. If you accept that amended motion.
That's it.
Aye.
That's it.
Aye.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous decision. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Best application of the night, too.
I think that ends motion, did we close?
Yeah, we already did. We closed it.
Just real quick, two minutes, and that is the master plan review.
Can we take a break for like three seconds?
Can we put that off?
Three seconds? Yes.
Three seconds?
Three second.
Three seconds. Okay, let's, let's see you do it. Three seconds. You got it.
You know, you could feel free to get up and move around anytime you want. Okay? You ready to call this? Okay, I call this meeting back to order. This is the master plan review. The economic development master plan was developed back in year 2015, according to my records, and I believe little Gito, Mr. Gito was on that, that committee. But now there's been gaps in time. We haven't received an update, so I will defer to Town Manager Tisdale, so to provide us with an update. Where are we with this, and what are the next steps?
Thank you, Chairwoman Roberts. As you know, as you mentioned, the master plan was done about five, seven years ago. There's probably, I'm just ballparking, about 300 action items that comes, come out of it. Some of them are projects, some of them are studies, like, or zoning bylaws, or things like that, to be accomplished. It's a document that I can really vouch for myself, that I've used a lot in the past, when I come to town meeting with projects, a lot of the traffic projects, you know, things like that. If you have it in the master plan, it's already been vetted, and it's typically an easier process to go through. There are many, many of those items have been completed, a lot of them. It is on the list for the town planner to actually compile, like, a spreadsheet with all the action items, and give an update of where we are, what we've completed for each one of those. Unfortunately, we do not have a town planner right now, so that, that task will be tabled for the next town planner we have. We were sort of waiting until that downtown zoning got approved, and that was one of the next tasks to be completed. So, but the good news is, there's been a ton of stuff completed. We just need to compile it into a document.
All righty, so we really don't need a vote for that, because you will be compiling that information, and you will present it once that you hire, or you fill that position, or once you get another set of arms?
Yeah. We're a little stretched a little thin right now, but once we hire a town planner, it would actually be a good document for them to read through and get familiar with what the town's goals and objectives are. But also, it'll achieve that purpose, and then it'll achieve a purpose of going through it and documenting what we have completed and what we haven't. So.
To my fellow Select Board members, do you have any questions in regard to Town Manager Tisdale, or in regard to this process?
None.
Thank you. So no votes need to be taken. Thank you so much for the update, Mr. Tisdale. Going to the next item is consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull any consent agenda items?
I have one correction to make, but I didn't mail it in. So I could, we could either table it, and I could do it for next time, or whatever you'd like.
I'm okay. If Mr. Gito has a correction to make, he has a right to make a correction. I don't mind voting in the minutes with the addition of Mr. Gito's amendment.
So we could make the motion with the necessary.
Okay.
The necessary edits.
I'll tell you what, what the motion is on, on, I think it's page two, on the minutes of May 24. My, one of the three things that I had mentioned initially, I find this.
Are you talking to the microphone?
Oh. I'm sorry. At the very bottom of page two of May 24, Mr. Gito said several things need to be done. And the first thing was complete the capital plan by the end of June.
So instead of saying by the end of the year?
By the end of June, for presentation to the board in early July. This is necessary to meld with the school capital plan. I know that I said that because I had written it down.
All righty.
And I, and I gave that to.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yeah.
And any other edits to the minutes?
No.
All right. And I would like to pull item number, just a minute.
Is it B, proclamation?
Yes. Item B, the proclamation. And that is the Town of Stoughton proclamation honoring and remembering Juneteenth to be proclaimed. Whereas we, the Town of Stoughton, recognize Juneteenth as the nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in 1865, and African-American emancipation in the United States, and declare June 20 in the year of 2022 as this year's celebration. And whereas the efforts of the Civil War veterans brought forth the Juneteenth effort, it took over 150 years to get to this point. Therefore, we as citizens honor the fight for freedom, and continue recognizing when one of us is enslaved, no one is totally living free. As a community, we continue to take a vow to fight racism and discrimination of all kinds, to allow our citizens to live free without prejudice and fear. And whereas we, the Stoughton Select Board, on behalf of the town's resident, remember the fallen, and continue to show our never-ending gratitude for their sacrifices on the battlefield. And whereas we, the national, and we recognize the national Civil War veterans, particularly those from the Town of Stoughton.
Bless them.
And we remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice. Now, therefore, we, Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Steve M. Kavy, Vice Chair, Joseph M. McCrisky, Scott D. Carrera, and Louis F. Gito, recognize June 20, 2022, as the celebration of Juneteenth in our town. In witness thereof, together, we have set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of Stoughton to be affixed on this seventh day of June 2022.
What, that's not part of the consent agenda, is it?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it's on the consent.
It wasn't included in the document.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I think we received it as an email separately.
It wasn't. It was, it was Deborah.
It's on the consent agenda. The document wasn't here. Deborah's got that.
So in the version that was sent through email, there was a typo, so I just want to make sure that doesn't get transferred. It was.
Oh, 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 it's item B.
Yes, item B.
Okay, I, I, I didn't see it, because I guess it wasn't there, and I didn't know what I was looking at. Thank you.
So it's in the first section, whereas the efforts of the Civil War veterans brought forth the Juneteenth efforts. In the version I have, which looks like a preliminary one, Juneteenth does not include the second N, so it spells Juneteeth.
Oh, okay. It's, in the version of the proclamation is T E E, T E N T H, right?
Yep. Just want to make sure we can get that in there. Appreciate it.
Got it. A motion to accept?
Oh, motion, yeah, motion to accept that.
So made.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The next, or.
For the rest of the, of the consent agenda.
The consent agenda?
Yeah, motion to approve the consent agenda with items A, C, and D, with Mr. Gino's changes for item D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The next is the question to Mr. Tisdale about the executive session items. Is there urgency to meet on these tonight, or can we wait until our next meeting, which is May 26, I mean, June 22?
Yeah, you can wait.
22nd or 21st?
Twenty, is that 22nd or 21st?
21.
21. So we can wait? Okay. I'll accept the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
There's several documents to sign, with the bond and a lot of other documents.